Dear Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for bringing this group of people together. Thank you for all the employees that work so hard in our city. Thank you for the -- people who are up here that are willing to serve. And even more, thank you for the great response and the audience that came to be involved in this city, the people that love this city, and they are the people that make it great. Thank you for all the blessings we have. Please guide us and direct us to make the best decisions for this town. Be with those that cannot be here, the sick. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, I'm done.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think that's my part. Okay, second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Looked approved.
Okay, and I have one correct. I would like request, and it looks like Commissioner Crutcher might have one, but I would request that we defer or remove the committee, the election of the committee members to July. I just think with the budget and how long everything's going to take and the next -- I would move it to the next meeting, but I think we're going to be in the same situation. So I would like to remove it from the agenda. Did you have something?
I did, Mayor, thank you. I wanted to -- I'm like you, there's a lot of things that are on the budget tonight, and we have some items that are probably going to require some pretty lengthy discussion, I suspect. And due to that, I would like to either defer some of the items, and I think you just mentioned one that could possibly be deferred, or in the alternative, I would like to move some of the lengthier items to the top of 10 under New Business, specifically items 10 I, J, K, and M. I would like to move those to the top under New Business. And I guess those would become A, B, C, and D, and then everything else would fall in underneath, or however you wanted to do it. And in addition to that, I would like to remove 8E from the consent agenda.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
It's been common practice to put anybody that was requested to be here for an item at the front of the agenda, so I do think that it's respectful to leave them at that position so that they don't have to remain.
I'm going to bring that up.
And the people for the expiring seats were requested to be here. Their seats are expiring, a lot of them June 15th.
Right. And that was one of the things why, when I asked for that not to be on the agenda, was you could give them plenty of notice, but I didn't, you know, when I saw it to approve the agenda, I requested it then, but it was not done. So...
No, it was already published.
Well, okay, well then, if it was published, at that point, you could have responded back that it was published. But it was typically the email that you send me that says for me to approve the agenda. So that's why I was wanting it removed. And I just think that due to the length of our agenda, there are several things that we should have just considered removing for the time being and taken it on another time.
Well, item, and item C, I think would be something that would be probably a lengthy discussion as well, under 10C that deals with the appeal from the Planning Commission. I think that's probably something that would be pretty lengthy. I don't have a problem if we want to leave B at the top to deal with those commission seats, if we're not going to defer it entirely. I know there's some folks here, our board seats, that's fine with me. But I do think that if we move B up, then we ought to at least consider addressing C, I, J, K, and M before we address some of these other issues. That's, and I hope that's not too confusing. I just think that those are items that are going to require lengthier discussions, and if, you know, if we get down to the end of the agenda and we're close to nine o'clock and we're talking about those things after we've sat here for a couple hours, it tends to not be as fruitful of a conversation, in my opinion. So that's why I'm asking for it to, those items to be moved up.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
If this is approved, that the recorder take note of who is here's to fill those positions and they not be required to come back at the next meeting.
Oh, of course. And then, I mean, it's up to y'all. We can go for a vote, either way, but it just seems like it was something, yes.
I agree with Vice Mayor, that certainly we have lots more pressing matters, so if we defer it, I think those people should be credit for showing up tonight and not have to be required to come back at the next meeting. Most of them, we all know anyway, so...
Okay, now, let me for clarification, Commissioner Crutcher. It's C, this is all in...
Under New Business.
New Business. It's C, I, J, and M?
K and M.
K and M. That you want to move to the top of New Business?
That's correct. And again, I don't care whether we defer item B or if we just go ahead and deal with item B. If the folks are here, that's probably not going to be too lengthy of a process. I don't care how we handle that. I mean, it's, whatever's fine.
Well, I think it would be, Mayor, a lot of people to come up and speak at the microphone. I'm fine with totally deferring it to July, like you said. And I guess if they're, Larry, if they have a meeting in the meantime, can they still hold that seat until they've been replaced?
Yes, they are a member of that particular board or commission, whatever they're on, until they're replaced.
So we're okay on that then.
Okay.
We just move to the first meeting.
No, that isn't here.
Yeah, I mean, I see Mr. Dowdy, I, yep, I see, I lost it, but I know.
True.
Who else? Who we got? Okay.
Mr. Pedersen, Mr. Butler, Hall.
Lowman. Everybody that's here to fill a seat tonight, stand up, please. There you go, right there. Brandon, can you do all that one time?
And I know Ms. Woodall had written a letter, I think.
Yes, she did.
So we could let her know that if she wants to be here, then in July to be...
Be at the next meeting.
Right.
So everybody but, what, two people were not here? No, everybody but one.
Mr. Butler is here.
Okay. You were one that we thought...
Congratulations on his new baby.
Sorry to have y'all come out and do this, but if we take this long over whether or not to remove you, you can see that it'll take a while for the budget, so it probably wasn't what we should have done, but thank you, everybody. And please, we invite you back if you're available to come back at the July meeting.
But it's not mandatory?
It's not mandatory now, but it would be for those that weren't there.
So we have the removal of B, and A and C will stay together and move I up into right behind C as follows in your changes? Or do you want to put I ahead of C?
I was going to move I all the way to the, well, C. We keep C and then go with I, J, K, and M.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we're, and I'd ask to remove E from the consent agenda, and I don't care where we put that in the pecking order, whatever.
Can, if, Larry, if we remove B, we can just do the consent agenda and then add B under, or, yeah, is it E?
No, he's taking out E. You can do a consent...
He can go to Old Business.
You can do a consent agenda, put it under Old Business.
Old Business, okay.
You can consider it when you get to Old Business and go on, and the only ones that you'll have to read is the ordinance captions, D and F, because you'll have to read E when you're doing Old Business, but under the consent agenda, you'll just have to read the captions to D and F.
Mayor, if I may, I'm just going to make a motion to actually defer item 8E to the July meeting.
Okay. Okay, yes.
May I progress item number C?
Um, no, C's not being messed with, is it?
We're going to defer it.
Well, let us get, I mean, done with our agenda. I mean, we're not really taking discussion, I'm sorry.
Second. Commissioner Crutcher.
Okay. Okay, and it's amended motion, right? Because you, or you wanted to put it all to...
This is just a motion to defer A.
Okay, so as long as we state, D is going to be, or E, I'm sorry, I wrote D. E is going to be...
Deferred.
And then we are moving items C, I, J, K, and M up on the agenda, and then at that time, we can discuss where we are and move everything else to the end.
I move to approve the agenda as amended as you just said.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item three is citizens' comments, and tonight, we have Ms. Marcia Elliott.
It was a pleasure to listen to Ralph Cross tonight from the Municipal Technical Advisory Service that we refer to as MTAS, and they work with, in cooperation with the Tennessee Municipal League, whose mission is promoting better city government through direct assistance to city officials and their associations. I chose to make this short comment tonight because I believe there are many citizens who would have enjoyed hearing particularly his summary at the end of the session tonight, but it wasn't audible and wouldn't be on tape, I believe. He said, "You have two options: either we raise revenues or cut expenditures, or both." Throughout the session, he continually reiterated, and I will paraphrase, "Borrowing from Peter to pay Paul is not acceptable to the State of Tennessee." He talked at great length about the process of defining budget and appropriating our money and the reality that the state is holding us accountable, that the state law says, quote, "You don't spend more than what is appropriate," and that it is our responsibility to deal with this as a managerial issue, particularly asking that the commission, this commission, give department heads up to the amount of money that they have been allocated, and then that reports would be made to the Board of Commissioners from those department heads. There would be discussion, reporting, and this bringing of this information to the council. It will take, in his words, "Someone overseeing to make sure department heads are responsible." I was particularly pleased to hear him talk about what a pleasure it has been to work with our city manager, and Tom Daughtry, that they have worked together for about a year, and that the general fund is basically made up of people, and it is difficult and challenging to do what we are about to do and to complete a process that has been a lengthy one. These problems, he continually stated, have been around for five years. With the little bit of research that is possible for tonight, as I understand it, we will likely be facing a property tax increase, as it is currently proposed. On the research I have done, an average dwelling will be asked to increase their taxes by about $12.25 per month. If that is the case, and I know we are a long ways from that decision, or some ways from that decision, I hope that citizens will simply keep that in mind, that we do have public safety to deal with, there will be time to talk about many, many other issues, and tonight, I plead for the citizens to support the process.
Thank you. Lynda Wheeler.
Mayor Carroll, commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak briefly. I'm a lifelong resident of Fairview, and at least six generations before me have been, and I've been complacent for too long about this town that I love and I call home, and so do my children and my grandchildren. Shame on me. Shame on me for not being more informed and being more involved in the decisions that are made that affect all of us, and for often blindly accepting that as something that I'm powerless to have an influence over, the decisions of those who are elected to serve, and for assuming that they always have our best interest at heart and of that of our city. I know your jobs are not easy, but it is your job to represent your constituents and to vote in their best interests. And if some of the constituents have not expressed discontent with the way our budget has been going over the last few years, it's probably because they're too much like me that they just don't know. But now we are beginning to know, and we're, and that's a good thing, because it's our job to know, just like it's your job to lead us. And I am, I'm for one, am going to become more aware and more involved and more knowledgeable. And I'm appalled that we can continue year after year to try to operate on more money than we even have the potential to have, to bring in. I know that we want things, we may even need them, but if we don't have the money for them, we can't have them, just like in our everyday life. If we don't have it, if we don't have the money, we can't have it. We are now backed into a corner, and as I see it, we don't really have a choice but to have a tax increase, but simply increasing the tax rate even by whopping 26 cents is not a fix, not even a one-time fix by itself. It must be coupled with restrictions in our spending that will make sense and make for a fiscally sound budget. Our spending needs to come from funds that were intended to fund those expenses. We all know that because something looks good on paper, doesn't mean it will work. The budget that we've been trying to operate under doesn't even look good on paper. I know that it's hard to do without things we want or need, or even to postpone them because we're all used to having what we want, and, but it's an even, and it's an even harder task to think about reducing staff. But I'm asking you to carefully consider passing a budget that allows us to save for next year's debt service payment without moving it around from other funds, and also to have a budget that is balanced and makes sense, and we can live, start living within our means, just like we all have to do at our homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of this, I put in a letter to the editor this week. I would like to state that again. To all the employees of Fairview, I appreciate the job that each of you has done in the past two or three years as we drain the resources for you to do your job. It is very painful to suggest that we lay any one of you off after all of your efforts, but the reality is, we do not have the money. I do not want you to make plans to spend your earned paycheck and then one day, go to the bank, and the money is not going to be there. To all the citizens of Fairview, I ask you to become informed and let your opinions be known. I am the citizen representative on the Finance Review Committee, and as such, I try to keep the numbers straight, but I cannot speak to your thoughts and concerns. That is the job of your elected officials. At this point, I believe our balance in unassigned is going to be a negative $700,000 at June 30th, and there will be no more funds to pull the money from next year if we do the same thing. We're doing this, we're restructuring our debt, and if we were going to be responsible, we would go ahead and save the debt payment that's going to happen a year from now, two years from now, actually, and have that caught up a year ahead of time so that we can pay it off earlier and not cost us as much interest as it's going to cost if we go to 2030 with it. If we want to run a, if we want a well-run city, we must have money to actually execute a plan rather than spend on an emergency basis. That would mean cutting our expenditures by 20% of the revenue and placing that in a capital fund so departments could properly budget. If you want to maintain the current level of employees, it will take doubling the tax rate in two years to pay back the money we have borrowed from other funds and have our reserves where they ought to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, fourth item on the agenda is awards and recognition. Mr. Hall.
Mayor, I have done tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, nobody else either? Okay, that'll bring us to five public announcements.
You can go ahead and do that.
Okay.
You can go ahead and talk about the call order.
Yeah, I mean, okay, you can add to it if you... One of the things that we had was the Fairview High School marching band is having an event June 6, which is this Saturday. They're having a car wash for new uniforms, McDonald's from 8 to 12, donating ice cream cones sells four to eight, so that's a second event, and it'll go to the band. So I know that, also, there's a big event coming, I think the same weekend at Nature Fest that the city gets to host, or the high school gets to host. So I know they're really busy trying to get uniforms and prepare for this event, so keep that in mind. The other option is just come inside and drop a dollar off in a bucket for free ice cream, and that's at McDonald's. So, and then the other one is, I have a list of items that Grace Works is requesting, and I'm assuming you can take this, buy Grace Works and donate spaghetti sauce, box meals, individually wrapped snacks and crackers, and salting crackers. Did you have anything else to add?
I believe the fishing tournament this weekend.
Oh, yes.
Rodeo, fishing rodeo.
Fishing rodeo, I mean, fishing rodeo, over at...
Evergreen.
Evergreen Parks. It starts, what time, 7?
7.
Starts at 7, and it's basically for ages 15 and under.
12.
12 and under. Hey, you're doing good. I don't have it in front of me, so I knew it was there, and there'd be a lot of door prizes and things like that for, it puts on the, TWRA helps us with that, and the park also, so everybody come on out. Last year, they stocked 1,000 pounds of catfish, am I right?
Right. This year's 800, 800 pounds.
800 pounds of catfish this year, so.
Correct.
Going to catch some.
Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everyone of the admission testing on Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 till noon. Also, we're getting our lights up between Tractor Supply and Walmart, the streetlights for safety purposes. I think four of them have already gone up. Was hoping three more would went up today, but so far, I hadn't seen them, and there's three on back orders, so there'll be six more put up in that real dark area at night. So that's a good thing to be getting done. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Okay, that will move us on to staff comments. And, Mr. Hall, did you want to go first?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to.
Okay.
Commissioner Crutcher mentioned the deficit that we've been working under for the past five years. I have been looking into that myself. There's reasons for that, that there was capital projects, there was the fire hall that's paid for, was the road payment to get our widened street. That is a little bit of history I'd like to state this afternoon, if you don't mind. Back when that first project first come in from TDOT, it was stated that the widening would be, have to have the utilities moved. Therefore, the Water Authority of Dixon, they actually reneged on their share to move their water and sewer, which amounted to a million, $200,000. In a meeting with TDOT downtown, Mayor Bryson, City Manager Forehand, and myself, Jack Johnson, our senator at the time, Glenn Cassidy, and Philip Johnson was our state representatives, as well as the city, I mean, the attorney for the Water Authority of Dixon. At that meeting, he stated the only way that Dixon would replace the water and sewer was that the rate payers of the City of Fairview would have to foot the bill. And the statement from him that day was tripling the rates of our water and sewer. I knew then, Mayor Bryson knew then, Sheriff Forehand knew then, that we couldn't ask our citizens to do that. So we purposely delayed it at that time to hopefully to renegotiate with the Water Authority to get them to pay some of that. Several months later, TDOT come back with a figure that was more reasonable for us to afford, which was somewhere around 400,000. Mayor Bryson, Andrew Hyde at the time, and myself went to the Water Authority of Dixon on one of their meeting nights to see if we could get them to participate in that expense. They, I don't have the figure, they more or less was a penance, in my opinion. So that's part of where the reserve went to, but the wise movements of that board, the board that y'all now serve on, to do that has kept the water rates down for our citizens of this town, which would have been tripled. And I know I paid mine today at 80 something dollars, so you triple that, that's a pretty expensive water and sewer bill. So I just wanted the citizens to know that taking that steps has saved them a lot of money over a period of years. That would have been a monthly charge and not a yearly charge. And I know the burden that y'all have up there tonight, I've had that same burden up there myself. So I do wish you well, but I did think the citizens needed to know that these boards do take them into consideration on every vote that they take. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Humber.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Daughtry will put my print up on the screen. I just briefly, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on a couple of things. One, a commercial development at Fairview West, which is going to be adding approximately 20,000 square feet of retail space. This development is going at the intersection of the Road to Walmart and Highway 100. It'll make it a four-way intersection. This is going to be, this plan is being considered by the Planning Commission next week. You can look, you can see from that, that's what the rendering looks like, that's what the buildings will look like, which we feel like is very attractive. They presented their landscaping plan to the Tree Commission this week, and it was very attractive. So we feel like this is a real plus. They've informed me that they want to bring their plans in by the end of next week, and so we, I feel like they are looking to open at least some of this space by the fourth quarter of this year. I also like to mention that Mr. Biata has talked with me lately, and he's getting ready to move on his project, which is approximately 350 houses. So we have a lot of things that are, that are coming, and I think this is really one of the good news things for us, and we feel like that we're very close to cutting some ribbons on some pretty significant businesses. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Johnson, do you have anything?
Just a real quick update for on July 3rd.
Okay.
We're changing a few things this year. Gates will open at 5:00, live music will begin at 6:00 this year. And due to budget restrictions and the smaller amount of donations we've received this year, the bands will not be paid. And at this point, there is no inflatable, there are no inflatables for the children as well. If we do get enough funds in, we will add back the inflatables for the children's area. But we are still accepting donations, and we are still accepting applications for vendors as well.
Okay. And probably if anybody, a business would like to sponsor a bounce house, it probably wouldn't cost a whole lot of money. Stick a sign up there, and that might be a good way that we could help. I know that the kids and families that come, that might be a great option, and it would be an expensive way to donate and promote your business, donate to the city and promote your business.
How many vendors do we have?
Sorry.
I was just going, how much are the bounce houses?
I think last year, we spent about $700 on those. And we had two big units, really big units, one of them was huge. There are lesser ones. And to answer your question, I believe we have six or seven food vendors so far.
You can get pretty nice ones for around $300 up. I mean, you could spend 500 if you want, but I purchased some for the high school for a event, and so it's, you can get them reasonable rates if anybody wants to do it.
Well, I'll donate my July salary to the, my net is $288.
I will as well.
I will too.
Okay, great, we got three, so when we'll get an opportunity, let us know what else, we might want to donate something. So, there goes, looks great to me, great. Okay, and let us know of any other issue. Okay. Anything else? We have Tom, Mr. Darty.
I have nothing this time, just want to say thank you, thank you to the board and the mayor for calling the workshop, I think it was very informative, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anything, any questions? Mr. Darty did provide us with April information. Did any of the commissioners want to ask? Yes.
Thank you, mayor, I had a question, it's on the, Mr. Darty, it's on your estimated fund balances that you provide in your April finance report. I'll let you get there.
All I've got is budget information with me at the moment, but I remember what, I believe it was $559 on the unassigned. That is overstated, I did find an error in that.
Well, I'm not sure that we're talking about the same thing, but what I noticed in the financial report was is that you included a sheet that was, that had estimated fund balances for this fiscal year. And the estimated fund balance and the unassigned at the end of this fiscal year, you projected to be 400 and, let me get you what your, yeah, so you can reference what I'm talking about. You projected the unassigned fund balance to be negative $115,081. Do you see that?
Yes.
And to come up with that, I looked at the expenses that you have listed. If you add the expenditures in the top, 4.1 million, to the estimated expenditures in the bottom, $747,000, that gives you total expenditures of $4.8 million roughly, okay?
Okay.
But then, over in the budget that you're proposing, under expenditures, you have estimated to finish this fiscal year $5.1 million, which is a difference of $271,000 that I believe we haven't accounted for that should be added to that negative balance.
The, when doing the state worksheets, I do have a, I do have a different number. Now this, yeah, I would have to look at that and then go over it, and I'd be more than happy to, but I do have, give you an updated number that I currently have that is going to the state. Let me find it. I don't have it broken down and unassigned, but instead, if you see on the bottom where it says total, that 559, 151 number, where it says total general fund, estimated general fund balance of June 30th, 250, at 559, I have an estimate of 443, 156.
How does that affect the negative number in the unassigned?
Well, you would just have to take the difference of 559 and 443, 156, and add that to the 415.
So it'll be more negative?
Yes.
But why would there be a different number in the proposed budget?
I'll have to double check, it's probably a spreadsheet error.
And I'll tell you, I really would like to know where we're, I mean, I know we can't know exactly where we're going to be June 30th, but I would really like to know a firm number, because there are some discrepancies in these numbers. And I would really like to have, well, I say firm, I don't guess it can be firm, but I would like to know a good ballpark figure of where we're going to end in the unassigned fund. And I'm still not sure that we're there, I mean, we're now June 4th. We, you know, obviously we're through May, so we only have three quarters of a month, you know, left where we're going to have money coming in and money going out. I want to know, I want to have a better number of where we're going to end. And I think respectfully, you should be able to provide that.
Hold on just a second. I believe we will have a negative fund balance as of June 30th, 2015, of negative $531,076.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Okay, anybody else's questions for Mr. Darty? Okay. Well, I'm sure we'll hear from you again, so we'll move on. Let's see, did, was, Mr. Paisley, did you have anything? I know fishing rodeo was mentioned. Okay, camps were start next week, is it too late to sign up, or? No, okay. Okay, is that's everybody that, I guess, Mr. Hall?
Since you mentioned camps, I was going to mention them later. We do have the possibility of having to hire two teachers to help with camps. And with me being under the hiring freeze, I'd kind of like y'all's input.
Well, I guess camp size is one of those things. I know you probably don't have to go through the same regulations as a childcare facility, but I kind of know that you, for the state requirements of any summer camp or childcare, you do have to be concerned with the ratios, so.
With the fees.
I think y'all would have to put some kind of proposal in showing how much, if you get funded, would be the issue.
Actually, there's a 400, $400, $500 positive balance after they're paid and everything, as well, you know, of course, if we get more students, it'll be a larger positive balance, so.
And it's six weeks camp?
I'm forgetting how many weeks, but I believe you're right on that.
Yeah, but paying for one or two people with.
I think it's about 2,400. And we've, I think the camp fees.
Hey, there's Jenny.
She's got the total information.
Okay.
Yeah, I have the numbers. What we would like to hire for the camp will cost $2,400. Right now, if we didn't take in any more campers, we have already making $8,075. That will cover, that leaves $5,675 to pay for camp supplies, which we don't use that much. What's left over pays for the rest of the programming budget for other things as well. So we have at least $8,075 coming in. The teachers cost $2,400 for the six weeks, and that leaves us $5,675 for camp supplies, which is way more than what we need.
Yes.
Jenny, when you say coming in, that's money we expect to receive, not that we have in hand right now?
No, they've either paid deposits, so they are locked in, or, I mean, we haven't had 100% because they're not due, the money's not due till 10 days, but that's how many kids. And we don't, when people pay the $25, more than likely, they're going to come. There might be one or two that don't. But that's from yesterday, and I had two people sign up today. So they're still continuing to sign up.
So if everybody that signed up and has paid the deposit comes and pays in full, that's what we expect to receive, is that?
Right, and like I said, I already had two more people sign up today, and they're, they'll continue to do that.
Is there, there's no cutoff, so, I mean, when you start adding people last minute, are y'all prepared for that?
Oh, yeah.
Or maybe you should do a cutoff?
Yeah, uh, no, we cut off the Friday before, so we're prepared. We work with a very small budget, and so we're prepared with supplies and everything like that. And most of them are full, or close to being full. So, you know, we buy one or two extra things to make sure that we're prepared for the camps to fill up.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Comments? Okay, well, I mean, that's, if, you know, you can get something together, I guess, and present it, we could vote on it. You know, I don't know how long she has, if two weeks is going to be, I know. But I don't even know how big the first group is. How big is your first group, Jenny? Eight to 10 groups, or? Oh, children, so your staff is adequate for the next couple of weeks. Okay, explain.
I have, we have, like I said, I can't remember if we have eight to 10. And then the following week, we have a full 16. And so we need the teachers to help with the ratios, and also you have to have the two teachers there with them at all times, plus you need someone to take the equipment out and all that kind of thing. Also, I can read you a whole list of things that we do outside of camp that is going on during the summer, depending on how much information you want.
Well.
Do we have volunteers, or any high school students, can they not participate if they wanted to as counselors or volunteers?
We do accept that, and we do have some volunteers that, just how we advertise is that we have teachers and retired teachers that are teachers, that that's what they're paying for, and naturalists. You know, when you have a high school student, they're good helpers and help with that ratio and that kind of thing, but you also need the teachers there as well.
Yes.
Jenny, if I understand correctly, you're not asking for any money, you're just asking.
No, we have the money.
The money, it's, it's, there's no money involved here, it's just simply the approval to temporarily hire these teachers.
Correct.
From that money that you already have.
Right, for June, the money was already in the budget, but plus the campers are paying for it, the parents.
I don't think we have to take any action at all other than to give Mr. Hall a nod of the head. We did not pass an ordinance that enacted a hiring freeze. We said that we didn't want anybody hired, but we did not pass an ordinance to that effect. And so I don't think we need to delay it. I think we could give them permission simply by taking a voice acclamation here. That's my input.
Well, I mean, is this where you want to do it? I mean, staff comments, y'all want to?
I agree with Commissioner Bussell, if we just give them the, there's no further monies involved in it, just to go ahead with the request that you have to hire the two teachers, as long as we can do it with the standards that we, that you have for the program.
Mayor, if you give them the direction to do it, he's got the authority under the charter to hire them.
Oh, yeah. I mean, and we don't, he's doing it just because we said there was a hiring freeze, and he doesn't want to hear a month later, well, you hired somebody in a hiring freeze, totally get it. But the thing about it is, and I understand ratios and trying to make sure you have enough coverage and the kids' safety, but, so there's not a lot of question to me. But I do wonder, is your goal only to break even, or is your goal to maybe make money to invest for next year or two?
Oh, yeah, that's what I was saying, we have, camp will not cost $5,600 for the camp supplies. I can't speak, we're still have July and that kind of thing, but I can't imagine spending more than $2,500, I mean, roundabout. So the remaining of that money helps pay for the other programs that we don't bring them money. So we, the camps are what we make money on. Not a lot of money, but we make some money on it. And like I said, it helps pay for the other programs.
Okay. If we have the go-ahead, is everybody in? Favor against?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm in favor, I mean, it's not, I mean, it sounds like that it's going to be paid for out of the fees that are expected to be collected. However, I am a little bit concerned about our loose definition of a hiring freeze. I think regardless of whether it's an ordinance or a resolution or not, I think we've given City Manager Directive to, and I think that's part of their proposed budget, that the hiring freeze would be strictly enforced. And I appreciate the fact that he has come now twice, two weeks in a row, and asked, I hate to say for permission, but I guess our blessing to hire those positions, and I think that's the right thing to do. But I, you know, I don't think we need to, I think it's pretty clear what a hiring freeze means. I don't think we need to get into this business of, you know, well, it means this on certain occasions, and it doesn't mean it on other occasions. I just, I'm concerned about that, but yes, I'm for this particular, these positions being filled.
I'm for it.
Me too.
Okay, looks like you can move forward. Okay, we've already removed the item from the consent agenda and the approval, so we could go forward with the consent agenda with A through D, and then F.
Move to approve.
Say.
Okay, we have a first and second, any discussion?
We'll have to read D and.
You'll have to read the captions to D and F, and after that, you won't have to do that anymore, assuming you pass the, you pass this on consent.
For the Attorney's instructions, item D is an ordinance to repeal a resolution number 01-15 and creating a constant consent agenda for the City of Fairview, Tennessee pursuant to Charter, Provision C-28-29, TCA Code 6-2215, Section 1, as amended by the Tennessee Legislative Act of 2015. That's 2015 as of April the 20th, Public Charter, Chapter 115. Move to approve, we've got to get that.
One second before we go on to the motion, you know, we didn't approve the minutes.
No, you don't have to read, what you have to do is read the captions to D and F, and then approve the consent agenda.
Okay, okay.
You have to read F and then approve the consent.
I got it, I got it.
Moving forward with item F, an ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee Budget for Fiscal Year 2014-2015 Budget. Move to approve the minutes. That's read, don't dig to it.
Every say was fine, yeah.
All right, good.
Okay, we have.
We do need a roll call vote on this because the legislature requires that we record the ayes and nays on the, on the consent agenda item.
Okay. Okay.
Ordinance.
Okay, we have a first and second. We're gonna go for a roll call vote. We'll start with Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sutton.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner?
Aye.
Okay. Crutcher?
Sorry.
I was coming, I was coming. Okay, um, so, all in favor, we all did it, so, we'll move on to old, well, no old business, new business. That will bring us to what was originally C, and it's discuss and take action on recommendation from the Planning Commissioner for rezoning application with preliminary master development plan for property located on Cox Pike, Map 43 parcel, 30.01 and 31, 32.19 acres, from RS40 residential to PUD residential planned unit development with a base of density of RS15 density Procter and Welch, owner Sutton.
He was gonna present his plan back to us for discussion, was your original plan in the first place, if I remember?
Yes, sir. If I may make a suggestion at the opening, just so you understand, I'm a stranger, obviously, to your community. As I see it, for the last 25 years, essentially, everything that's been done, from a development and a construction standpoint, has been done by men who live in the community, whom you know, and who frequently volunteer and serve in various capacities. I'm the stranger, and I'm coming into town, no one knows me, and I'm wanting to do something that no one has ever done here before, even though it's been done elsewhere. And so, people have a real problem looking at something from a stranger they've never seen done here. I would like to ask if it would be out of order that one, two, or three of you volunteer to go look at what I've done, so you know me by what I've done, and go look at precedents in Nolansville that will show you demonstrably what can be built on a 5,000-square-foot lot, how it looks, and prove that it's old, and then come back here, and we'll go look at the houses presently in our 15 districts that are for sale at the same price. I think this is just a question of getting to know me and what I stand for, because you don't have to take me at my word. I have a reputation. I'm the first to ever put into Williamson County the first step system. Dixon will be, for the first time, putting in a step system. You all will be, for the first time, experimenting with the step system. So, I have experience that I think serves all of our interests, and it's not my role, as I see it, to just push dirt and flip it out to someone else. I pride myself on creating value, and I do that by doing things differently, doing them personally, and building the houses on my development myself. So, I'd like a chance to introduce that to a small committee of men or women, and then you can put it into perspective and vote on it.
Okay. I have a, um, Commissioner Crutcher.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Did I pronounce that correctly? Uh, I, I know that you have been either before the Planning Commission or before this board, now, two times, and I know you've been before the Planning Commission several times. Um, three?
No, two.
Two times. So, this is your fourth time here, and I understand that, um, that it's probably foreign to you, coming into Fairview and, and attempting to do something, uh, different than, than what's been done here before. But, the thing that, that I had a problem with the last time that you were before this board, is that at that point in time, you were attempting to s, bring something different to this board than what had been presented to the Planning Commission.
That's correct.
And I thought, from just a jurisdictional standpoint, that wasn't appropriate, uh, because what you're essentially doing is appealing a decision from the Planning Commission, and I thought that we should see and consider the same thing that the Planning Commission saw and considered, nothing extraneous. And now, you're asking us to form a committee, this, members of this board, to go out and do something extraneous, and look at what you've done in other communities. Let me finish, what you've done in, in other places, and that's, and again, I don't think that's fair or appropriate to the Planning Commission. What I'm interested in hearing is whether you're willing tonight to present to us your appeal as you presented it to the Planning Commission.
Sure.
That's what I want to know.
Sure. I made a suggestion, I'm perfectly willing to present.
That's what's on the agenda, and that's what I'm interested in.
All right.
From my perspective, that's what I'm interested in you doing.
I would ask if it would be helpful that all of you review the tapes on the last three meetings, because I don't think those meetings were ever able to focus on the primary issue of the plan. The primary distraction was the fact that the step system was a system in and of itself that no one understood. If you do that, you'll have a better understanding of the frustration that brings me before you with this appeal. When you look at the plan, what I am doing is I am essentially following the contours of a tabletop ridge. This is a 32-acre site. I'm building on only 12 and a half acres of that 32 acres, and two and a half acres are road. And I'm using small lots, because if you look at the topography, each one of those lines in a lot is five foot. It's estimated, these are aerials, we will have to do field surveys to calculate the exactitude of what you're looking at. But, you don't want more than one line between the front of the lot and the rear of the building pad. You wanna be able to clear that site level, keep your foundations level, and let the lot drop off behind the house, which is one of the reasons why I kept 100-foot depth for the lots, to keep them on relatively flat land following the tabletop. When you have land that curves, you try and follow that curve the same way when you cross a river, you try and go with the current on a diagonal to the opposite shore. I am following the contours of the land, the road curves, and as you all know, when you take a sharp curve, you try to stay to the inside to keep it short. When you have frontage on a road that constantly curves, it widens to the rear and wastes land to either side, the wider that frontage is. When I tried to add six foot to these lots, making them 56 feet, I ended up having to add three more acres of construction that I had reserved for the septic system. The plan, as I've designed it, works in correlation with the step system, on the assumption that Dixon will understand the dynamics of what I've isolated in green. I'm following the drainage patterns of the site. The detention is right there, in the middle of the natural drainage of the site on the eastern slope. All of that green indicates my desire to turn a drip area into essentially what is called a rain garden, where you have red maples, and yellow maples, and Schumarty oaks, and river birch, that live in what we call wet-foot environments, so that you actually create a landscape that people can enjoy and walk through with that drip field, instead of isolating five acres behind a four-rail fence and turning it into grass.
Well, let, let, let me stop you. You're, you're saying a lot of things, but I still don't know exactly what you're asking us to do. You're asking us, what are you asking us to approve?
The, as Will Owen explained it to everyone, I'm asking you to approve, as a concept, a density of 2.9...
Lots per acre?
That's the R15 designation, which is 93 lots on 32 acres. I'm asking you to approve a lot size initially of no less than 50 by 100, 5,000 feet. That means if I need to, for the septic tanks or for any other purpose, make the lots larger, I'll make them larger, but it can't be smaller than 50 by 100 feet.
As I understood, and I've read everything that you presented, I've looked at the, I've looked at the, the map and the plan, and I've, and I've read every, I've read the minutes from the Planning Commission, I've read the engineering report. You're, you're planning to build 2,000 to 2,500, uh...
That's correct.
...square-foot units, and you're, on a 5,000-square-foot lot?
Yeah, the building pad is roughly 40 by 55.
So, so that's a pretty significant footprint on that lot. There's not a lot of room outside of the footprint of the, of the unit.
Actually, it encompasses less than 60% of the lot, which conforms to the reg standards.
And although this is a planned unit development, where you're asking us to rezonate to RS15, in actuality, if I read the minutes correctly, and I think, um, Planning Commission Member Mangram said that really it's an RS5 based on the 5,000 square-foot lots, is that fair?
See, that's one of those statements that really isn't to the point. A PUD, and I keep breathing, I'm sorry, into the microphone, but a PUD is, by definition of variance, suited to the difficulties of the topography. So, for instance, Brownland Farms, 250 acres, it's the same density, 2.9, but it's flat land, so they can build a variety of different-sized lots without any problem, because it's topography that is relatively flat. I can't.
Well, the thing that's compelling to me, and what I, what I read, I mean, if it was a split decision that got you here, that, that might not be, I might have some, you know, some different, a different opinion. But, this was a unanimous vote by the Planning Commission.
Not really. If you'll go listen to the tape, no one spoke up.
Well, I'm looking at the minutes. I mean, in the minutes, there's nobody for it on the Planning Commission, and everyone that was present was against it. I mean, that's compelling to me.
No, there were two votes against it, and the others didn't speak, yea or nay.
Well, on the record, they're against it.
My point being, there's a significant difference between seeing the tape and reading the transcript, that's why I'm here. All of this is subject to what Dixon will approve.
I, um, I recall it different, there was, um, unanimous nay votes. Um, now, there was a lot of discussion of the matter and different things. I don't know if the water issue was actually an issue. I think that, um, a lot of the Planning Commission understood the system.
Well, no one's seen a...
I think there was a lot of, um, questions that were still asked, and it had a lot to do with, um, did we want to set the precedence of, you know, is that where we wanted to RA? And then, when you went up to the RS15, it was still really small, and so, I think that was a lot of the discussion.
That was...
But, why, I have a question, is why didn't you present the latest plan to the Planning Commission before you came back again to us?
Just because I followed, in a two-day window, a recommendation made by Frank that he thought would be helpful. It had nothing to do with points of order.
Okay, so, the one that you presented us to, at the last Board of Commission meeting...
Which wasn't, it was withdrawn, so it was never considered.
Right, because Commissioner Crutcher wanted you to go back and bring in front of us...
Which is what I'd rather build, yes.
The actual, which made sense.
Right.
But, um, the other plan has still never come before us.
Well, it's not a plan I really wanted to endorse. I was prepared to show, in a graphic display, what happened. You know, you take, you add five foot to a 100-foot lot, that's only 500 feet, but you multiply that by 80 lots, it's an acre. Well, if you've taken 13 lots out of the total, you should think they'd balance one another. But, because of all the land lost when you're making these curves, where you can't fit a building pad anymore, that simple addition of five foot, so that one of the side yards is 10-foot, ended up costing me, in a field I'm saving for the septics, 12 lots, a total of two and a half acres. These little quantities make a huge difference on topography of this sort.
So, this is what you're standing by? The, the one that went to the, um, the Planning Commission?
This is the one I would prefer to work with when going to Dixon, unquestionably.
That, that area right there just seems like an odd place for that density. I know where you're, you're talking about, I mean, it just, it, maybe I would understand that kind of density if it was right here in the town center or, or on the highway, but right there on Cox Pike, I, I just don't...
It's not, it's not an unusual density. First of all, the traffic count will show that traffic on Cox Pike has actually decreased by 1,000 cars 30% over the last six years. I don't know why. You can't widen Cox Pike, and it's going to have to be widened. Brownland Farms alone is going to dump 80% of its traffic into northwest and onto Cox below me. It's developments and their densities that give you the cash and the wherewithal to widen, to handle that traffic, project by project. There's no indication at this point that that density, which is going to be limited to those 93 maximum lots, is going to have any greater load factor than 60 lots. It's just, it's, it's well with under what was traffic in that area back in 2002. I mean, that'll be supported by the traffic study.
Do you have something?
I, I was gonna ask a question. Are, are we more concerned with lot size or the amount of lots on the 32 acres?
I think it's lot size.
It's lot size. So, if he had 1,000 acres and still only wanted to build 93 houses, we still wouldn't want him to do it on 5,000-foot lots. All right. How many 5,000-foot lots have you built in Nolansville?
I've been building 400 to 500,000-dollar homes. We don't do those on 5,000-foot lots. I'm doing these, this size, specifically, this is the way in my mind I break it down...
All right, let's, let's start over, let's start over. At the beginning of your conversation, you said that you have done this in Nolansville.
No, I said it's been done in Nolansville, and I can take you in...
On 5,000-foot lots.
On five, this very size lot.
But, you didn't build any of those?
No, I was building at a much higher price point in my own subdivision.
What did they sell for?
250,000, that's why they were designed to sell for that. Celebration Homes in Goodall built the homes.
Is that the sell price of these homes?
Yes, that's where, that's the price point I'm trying to hit. That's the price point that's critical to this market. No one's selling homes at 300,000 in this market today, and if the market corrects in the next year, like I think it will, no one's gonna sell 300,000-dollar homes spec, except on a custom basis, to anyone.
Well, in your opinion, in Nolansville, how many vacant homes have been, how many homes have been built on these 5,000-foot lots that have not sold?
Well, Bent Creek was a total of 350 lots, and it was divided roughly into 30, 30, 30, all right? 30% of the lots were 50 by 100, 30% of the lots were 60 by 120, and the remaining 30% were widened to accommodate higher-priced homes. The first homes were base-priced, so you're talking about roughly 100 homes. Now, what they're doing on roads that are more rural than ours, Goodall is building on slabs, fourplexes and eightplexes, and selling them for just under 200,000. In other words, no side yards, shared firewalls, what we used to call condominium or apartment units. The market has changed.
So, just say in Bent Creek, what you're speaking of in Nolansville, all the 5,000-foot lots that were built on, they did sell. They may be vacant now, people may have moved, they may be forced to...
No, no, they were, they were completed in the last year, in fact. There were some residual ones that Celebration Homes just finished building out.
So, evidently, there is a market for people that want to live on a 5,000-square-foot lot.
Yeah, but understand, this is a 350-acre subdivision, you know, they had a lot of open space, and what I'm trying to give people is 20 acres of open space, on one side, land the kids can clamber on, on the other side, land that adults and kids can walk through and enjoy as a landscaped amenity. I'm reserving up at the front, land that I hope there'll be money sufficient to building an amenities center with a pool.
I also heard you say, I believe, the minimum lot size of 2,000 feet... I also heard you say, I believe, the minimum lot size of 2,000 feet to 2,500. Which is it? What's your minimum lot size going to be? I mean, home size on the lot?
2,000.
2,000 will be the smallest one, because we can require that should this pass.
Well, you normally, I have an HOA. There will be CCRs that put a minimum into the HOA. So yeah, I want to make 2,000 square foot my minimum, and I'm giving them a bonus room option that can be built out over a five-year period that adds another 400 feet.
So if that's the case, you're gonna sell the 2,000-foot house for a minimum of 250,000?
I'm going to try to. Right now, the cost comps are $126 a square foot. I'm gonna try and list them to 130. You can go look at what Old South is offering on Crowcut today. They're offering 2,000 square feet at approximately 227,000. And the market everywhere else is 150. I want to add value and kick those prices up per square foot so that other builders can build. How do I do it? I do it because I'm developing my own lots, and I can fold that into the construction cost of the home.
Well, is there a motion on the table?
I just wanted to say that the, sort of comparing what's been developed in Nolansville. Nolansville has a similar population to Fairview, but it's seven less square miles. So they're more densely populated just by, by the geographical nature of the town. I mean, Fairview's sort of unique in the geographical shape, sort of long and narrow in places, and goes out two major highways. It's kind of a unique, unique place.
Oh, I think you're a much, you sit in an ideal location between 96 and 840 for growth. But all of your land outside of that 96 Dice Lampley corridor, when you get to 840, it falls from the western horizon radically down to Fairview Route 100. And that land all conforms to the kind of topography I'm talking about. And ideally, if it were long-range planned, you'd be using these step systems to irrigate organic farms that were interspersed and latticed between the subdivisions. I think this is a prototype for where Fairview will go along 840.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny the appeal, or the plan that's been appealed.
Okay. Do we have a, I got a first, do we have a second?
I'll second with my discussion.
Okay, we got a second for discussion. Now, I will say, one of the things that was brought up in the, the planning commission meeting was the fact that we do have RS zoning around City Hall. But one of the things that was brought up a couple times was the fact that we were throwing out our land use plan, that as a group of citizens, or as a board, they had determined what, how they wanted the city to grow. And so one of the things that came up, and a lot of it was, because we had several that night, that all had the RS-8. And, you know, and it could be RS-40, or it was several different examples. But a lot of the conversation is, you know, the reality is, we have this land use map in place, and what kind of standard are we gonna set? How are we gonna grow? Are we gonna throw it out the window? So that was some discussion that I wanted the board of commissioners, if they didn't watch the meeting.
If I may, that's a 15-year-old plan, and I think it conforms
Actually, no, it was done a couple of years ago. If y'all, I wasn't on the planning commission, but it was done.
Three years ago.
Yeah. If they're giving you a different one, then I don't know, but there's
Well, when I asked Will, he said it was 15 years old.
There was three years ago, they did.
The reason I made that motion is simply because I think that it is a density that is uncommon, especially in that particular location, that we've, you've presented it to the planning commission, and you've done what you're supposed to do. If you don't get the, get what you, get the outcome that you want there, you've properly appealed, and I appreciate that, and I hate that you've kind of had to go through this. But, you know, that board or that commission has been trained to look at these things. And it's, like I said, it's just compelling to me that nobody voted for it. I mean, nobody. So I just, I can't vote to
So is that going to be the precedent going forward on Westview, when Mr. Biata presents?
It's gonna be my precedent.
Because he's at a much higher density with 2,500 square foot lots. I've looked at his plan.
If something comes out of the planning commission, and there's not a single person on that commission, and those people, you know, are there for a reason, and not a single person has voted for it, yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna overturn them on that.
There's a, that's a mischaracterization.
Well, call it what you may, but I'm looking at, I'm looking at the minutes, and I see who voted for it, and I see who voted against it. So I, you know, maybe you, maybe you're, that's your opinion that it's a mischaracterization.
No, I mean, if I may ask Frank, who's the gentleman who's in construction, who's the ex-Navy SEAL?
Mitch Doughty?
Yes. Yeah, he repeatedly drew attention to this and did not vote against it. He just didn't vote. I mean
No, he voted.
He did.
He did vote. Yeah, and he even questioned, you know, were we, you brought back the RS-15, and he even made a comment about it.
So is the
And then once it was brought to light, the actual lot size was equivalent to, you know, the five, that's probably when everybody else, there was some division on whether or not, you know, there was a lot of discussion.
So what's the consensus? Is the consensus that you want a 15,000-square-foot lot on land that won't accommodate it?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I can't speak for the board, but there was a lot of discussion up until that point. And then when you really hear the equivalent, even though you were no longer bringing a R8, you basically, and you brought us an RS-15 because you felt like that's really
A PUD.
What the board was, you know, the planning commission was kind of leaning towards. But when you brought it, and it was even smaller, you know, I think that's probably what was some of the discussion.
The lot never changed in size from the 125 lots to the 93 lots.
Yeah, you did decrease. Yeah, I agree. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some questions for you.
Sure.
Let's talk a little bit about what it'll look like. You conceptualize that it will have sidewalks, and streetlights, and all of that?
Yeah, the full urban standard.
Okay, sir. These houses, they will be three-bedroom, two-bath units?
Yeah, the way I've tentatively designed it, each bedroom would be 12 by 18, and would have its own walk-in closet and its own bathroom.
Okay, so, well, will they, can be constructed of brick, or a brick and
No, we'll be using vertical and horizontal hardy plank with some stone adjunct trim on it.
Okay. All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, I'll just, just add to this, that there is never, since I have been here, a subdivision presented to this city that people didn't get in an uproar about. And Castleberry Farms was the largest one, and I can remember seeing a crowd so large they could not even get inside the old City Hall building. People were against it. And look at it now, it's one of the greatest things that are here. I personally don't want to live on a 5,000-square-foot lot, but evidently, there's people out there that do.
A lot of them.
You're talking about building a house that's larger in square footage than over half of the homes that we have in our city already. I can't imagine us not giving it some consideration. He's wanting to build a better, not a better, but a bigger product than over half the houses in our city right now. At a, at an asking price of 250,000, which is way more than what the average home price is in the city now, even with all the monster houses we have. So I don't, maybe your location's not right. I don't want to live on 5,000 feet, but maybe somebody does.
Well, if I could add something. I've lived on lots that small in various places, and, you know, one of the reasons that we liked Fairview when we moved here was because there was a bigger lot. But there are bigger lots still available in Fairview. There are other subdivisions and so forth and so on. I'm concerned about the materials in those other places that I've lived. The houses were always, when they were that close together, they were always brick, 100% brick, all the way around, for the purpose of retaining value, for the purpose of continuity of appearance, for many of those purposes. So I have some concerns, not about the density, because I think that would be left up to people. The topography of our town is a bit unusual with the ups and downs and so forth and so on, so I'm not an expert, so I would, I'm concerned that we're not gonna build them out of brick, so that we start to see them, if people don't take care of them, we start to see a very high-densified area that, instead of going up in value, goes down in value.
Well
And that is a concern to me.
I can alleviate that concern when we get to that stage. You know that graphics are part of the final presentation, and the streetscape is part of the final presentation. See, what I want to do is a modern concept that basically eliminates carpet and delivers all wood floors, and that gives people at this price point what no one else is giving them, 10-foot ceilings up and down. The kids are gonna have rooms they can live with through college if they have to. And please remember, we're not talking vinyl. Hardy plank today is a very sophisticated concrete product. And in many cases, it's superior to brick, it's just we're used to brick. I see this just like an open house floor plan. Everyone gets a small backyard, there are no fences allowed, the only fences allowed are open, four-inch wide, powder-coated. That's the same way we did it in Watkins Creek. And if you take 90 lots and divide it into the remaining acreage, everyone has, besides the 5,000-square-foot fee simple that they own, a shared interest of another 10,000 feet. That when you add it all up, comes to about 20 acres of land that they can utilize in common. And I think that's where we're going, and that's why the HOA is the central part of this.
Well, as I said, the density doesn't bother me. I, and I agree with Commissioner Johnson, that any subdivision that comes up here that has more than three houses in it seems to solicit a afraid-of-change-type response. And that's okay, that's what people are allowed to do. But I'm not familiar with the material you're talking about, and I just do have a concern that when you build houses of this density, that the maintenance of those houses can be accentuated if, if one house happens to start to be dilapidated. And you can take care of your own, but if the person that close to you is not taking care of their own, then you have a bigger problem than if you do if they're on another acre away from you. And so part of that is what they're built out of, so I would have to educate myself or whatever. But I, I'm not, I'm, I'm, the density doesn't, doesn't bother me. I think we're gonna be dealing with that issue from now on.
If I could have permission
Okay, I have a commissioner that wanted to say something.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to let you know, Commissioner Bussell, and those that may or may not know, the actual building materials, we can handle that through the PUD. We can make a requirement that they can only be this, or they have to be so much percentage this. We can dictate to him what he can and can't build with. We have that right under the PUD. I will tell you, speaking of the Hardy Board that he's talking about, there are houses $5 million in Brentwood that have it all over them. So it is a very, very, very good product, and I can speak to that from, because I know we sell paint for it every single day. So that doesn't mean that's what you want to see out there, I'm just telling you, industry standard-wise, he is telling you the truth on that, because that is a product that is out there everywhere.
And correct me if I'm wrong, because, you know, I don't, I'm just a layman when it comes to this thing, but if you sell paint for it every day, that means that it has to be painted periodically.
Just like the, just like the trim and the fascia board and anything else that's on the house?
Every 15 years, if you do it properly.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I just never had a brick house I painted.
And there are bunches of people that are doing that too on a brand-new brick house, buying the brick and immediately painting them.
This is why you have an HOA, and you haven't had HOAs before either.
Okay, with that being said, are we, any other, we have a motion on the table. So I have a first and second.
I make one recommendation before we vote. I would, as a recommendation to you, when you go back, is get the planning commission to do what you suggested or asked of us, for them to go look at these projects that are out there, so that they can get a visual
I'm willing to do that. I'll take the time to
Okay, but I'm just, but I'm just letting you know, when we vote, that's my suggestion to you, because I go along with
I'm, that's why I suggested it. I'll take a group everywhere and anywhere, and I'd like Will Owen to come with us.
Are you gonna pay for that?
Yes. Yes, I will, because it's important that people see what I'm talking about.
I'm just saying, we've been talking about budget a lot. I thought I would throw that in there.
Yes, I will.
Who's dumb? No, I mean, I think it's a fine idea to go look at it.
It's, we're coming to that anyway. If you look at West Haven, I mean, that's kind of what we're looking at too. So it's, I think it's doable here, but we need to take a strong look at it.
I just ask that you do, because I think that's what you're going to see increasingly. Dave McGowan, for instance, with Regent Homes is coming in here. That's what he has made his whole life, building in Lenox Village, for instance, most recently. This is going to be a pattern for your growth.
Okay, we're gonna have to wrap this up. We have a motion. I'm gonna call it to, would you like to repeat the motion, Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Crutcher just made a motion to deny the request with Vice Mayor Sutton seconding.
That's right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
So is it that I go back to the planning commission and see if we can organize a group? And would you make that recommendation to them?
I think, I think staff can handle that without him having to be on the agenda, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
You can get with Wayne and Frank and
All right, we'll coordinate. Thank you.
Pick some day, see who's available.
At 8:30, we'll go to our second item in new business. That would be item I.
Discussing or take action on bill number 2015-26, ordinance number 891, and ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July the 1st, July 2015 and ending June, June the 3rd of 2016, Commissioner Bussell.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a first and second discussion.
I just have a point of clarification, Mayor, if I may. Are we voting on the tax rate here? Or are we, there's two agenda items that look pretty similar or maybe identical. Are we voting on the tax rate, or are we voting on the proposed budget?
They're both on the agenda. The first time you'll vote on the budget, as it says here, and then you'll come back and vote on the tax rate. They're all in one ordinance. But you have, you have to vote on the budget first, because by statute, the tax rate is to finance the budget that you voted on, but it's okay to put them in one ordinance.
Okay. Then I'll, I guess I could start from there.
Yeah, go ahead. I was kind of fine before that got to me.
You know, I, we've had, as Commissioner Bussell stated last time we were here, that we have had numerous hours of budget discussions, and we have gone over some of the same things over and over and over. But I think some of the things that we've gone over and over and over are worth repeating, because for some reason, we continue to miss the importance of those things. Mr. Hall gave a brief history of his, I guess, thinking in terms of how we ended up in this situation. And one of the things, based on the, the And one of the things, based on the story that Mr. Hall told about the water line and WADC, takes me back to when we paid WADC to take the water and sewer over from the City of Fairview. And the word that comes to mind, you heard Mr. Cross earlier give a word that he gave out about the budget, the word that comes to mind to me is "plan, plan, plan." And we've had a real issue with planning. And that issue that Mr. Hall described is one of the consequences of poor planning, in my opinion. And I'm saying that as a citizen, because I wasn't on the board when that happened. But I guess the point is, is this issue goes back probably a decade to how we got here. And then, and I've sort of described it as a perfect storm. There's been a lot of variables that have played or taken, played a role into where we are right now. But, you know, we're going to end this coming fiscal year, or this, rather, this fiscal year, with a large negative balance in the unassigned fund. Mr. Cross mentioned earlier, and he said this, and I think it was in one of the citizen comments earlier, he said that, you know, you're going to have to figure out a way to raise revenue, and there's a tax proposal in this proposed budget, or decrease expenditures, or a combination of both of those things to, and I'll quote him, "to make a positive transition," a positive transition, and that's, those are his words. And, you know, I have said over and over and over that I think we have to attack this by doing both of those things. What's proposed in the budget is that we'll end up, based on the numbers, with us having a $532,000 surplus. But what is significant about that number is that approximately $400,000 of that surplus is created by a tax increase. So the citizens who didn't play a role in getting us here, neither did the employees, in all fairness, the citizens who didn't play a role in getting us in here are bearing the brunt of our poor decisions and our poor planning. And that's not acceptable to me. And I've said that numerous times, and I'm not going to vote for a budget that increases the taxes to the level that these, that this budget does, and does not cut on the expense side of things. You know, I did just some quick math earlier, and in the unassigned fund, the employee-related expenditures makes up 83% of our expenditures, our total expenditures, 83%. That leaves, do the math, that leaves 17% to operate the city. That's not enough money to operate the city. That's not enough money to give the employees the tools to do the things that we expect them to do, to give them the tools to offer the service that we expect them to offer. This budget has, again, as I've stated before, it makes no significant appropriations for building maintenance, it makes no significant appropriations for maintenance to land. It is, and, you know, I asked Mr. Doherty, our CFO, at the last meeting, have we really got to the bottom of where we can go on operating? Do we have any cushion there? And the response was no, he doesn't think we do. So if one of those events happens, that Mr. Cross spoke of earlier, a disaster or something unexpected, because as we know, life happens, there's no wiggle room. There's nowhere to go and draw that money from. I'm not going to vote for a budget that puts us in that situation. I'm not going to do it. You know, those are the numbers, those are the things that I pull from the budget to sort of, in a nutshell, of what it is and what's in there and where that leaves us. I think we have to look at, you know, I was talking to some folks this past week and learned that as few as six years ago, when the city was managed by Shirley Forehand, we had approximately 41 employees. Since that time, we have had a net gain of 18 employees in the city. We're now at 59 employees, with some significant commercial growth, but no real significant residential growth, no real huge spike in population. At the same time, as we've increased the number of employees, we've also increased the salaries for those employees. I've said before, the average salary in the city is somewhere a little over $40,000. You know, if you look at that number and you look at the organizational chart, it appears that the city is really top-heavy. We have a lot of chiefs and not a lot of Indians. And I, it's my position that this budget, you know, it just doesn't cut enough, it's hard to say this, but it does not cut enough on the employee-related side of things. And we are living above our means, and we've got to get this under control. And, you know, I agree with Mr. Cross, this is not going to be a fix. Under any proposal that you've heard, this is not going to be a fix in one year. It's going to take time to get us out of where we are. But I feel like that puts us on a path. If we would cut there to get to the number that we've proposed, that we've thrown around, that we've asked the administration to come back with, if we get to that number, that does a couple things, it gives us some cushion in the budget, because we know there's going to be revenue, we know there's going to be an increase in revenue next year, just by virtue of the sales tax, you know, that we're going to bring in. So there's going to be some built-in increase in revenue. But it will give us enough cushion to where we are going to be on firm financial footing going forward. One of the citizens earlier mentioned making sure that the budget that we proposed takes into account, although there's not a principal payment on the debt restructure this coming fiscal year, that we should act like there is. And I can't agree more. I think we need to act like we have to make that payment this coming year. You know, if we don't pay that thing off, that debt restructure off early, and we extend it out to 2030, it's going to cost the taxpayers an additional, approximately an additional $400,000 in interest for us extending the debt. And these are the things that we've done, you know, which are, in my mind, the things we've done to address this issue. And in my mind, these things are sort of, you know, sort of last-ditch effort things that you would do. We've restructured our debt. And although that sounds great, what that means is, is we simply have deferred paying our debt. We still owe the debt. It doesn't come without a cost. There's increased interest associated with that, there's fees associated with doing that. It costs the taxpayers and the citizens money to do that. That's not a great thing. We're now talking about taking out a TAN, a Tax Anticipation Note, to help our cash position in the first few months of the next fiscal year. That doesn't come without a cost. There's interest associated with that, that costs the taxpayers, that costs the city money. And in my opinion, simply defers the cash flow problem from the beginning of the fiscal year to the middle or end of the fiscal year. We have to pay that money back. We're proposing selling city assets. We're selling a piece of property that we bought with, anticipating that we would use that for a fire hall, or I guess some other municipal building at some point in the past. It sounds like we got it for a pretty good deal, $135,000. We're now going to sell that, and we'll take $135,000 for it as the minimum bid on that property. You know, we're liquidating an asset that in the future we may need, but we're not going to have, because we're in the position that we are now. We're raising taxes, but we're not really cutting expenses significantly. And the expenses that are shown in the budget to be cut are actually because of the debt restructure, which I don't think we should consider. I don't think it's fair to consider that. I'm going to leave you with one last thing, and I won't say anymore. In the budget as proposed, there's some things that are, that the administration lists as parameters, and one of the things is 26.5 cent property tax increase. Okay? We know that's going to happen, we know that there's going to be a property tax, or that there should be a property tax increase. I've proposed that the tax rate go to a dollar, because I think that really puts us on a good pace going forward. I hate that we have to go to a dollar, I don't want to pay any more either, but that's where we are. We've proposed a hiring and promotion freeze. Well, you know, I would like to think that that means something, but if history is any indication of what might happen in the future, I don't know that that means a thing. I don't know what that means. It's been so loosely defined, apparently it's not, there's been no ordinance passed, there's been no resolution passed, we just, Mr. Hall's doing the right thing, he's bringing any proposed hires to the board, but I don't really know what that means. No salary increase, that's a no-brainer. K-9 officer in the drug fund, it sounds like, based off what Mr. Cross said tonight, that's something that we can do. Fine. Keep street workers in unassigned, I couldn't agree more. Decrease overtime by 58%. Decrease overtime by 58% is smoke and mirrors. What we've done is we've moved Judge Dryer's salary out of overtime pay to part-time. We've not really decreased overtime by 58%. So, I'm not going to vote for this budget as proposed, and I'm not going to vote for the tax increase that goes along with it. And I've just indicated the reasons why. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor, if I could...
Sure.
Tom, could you go over the changes that you made and what was presented the last time, and then what you emailed to us?
Yes, sir. On the revenues, I did another run-through on estimations, and the numbers came back. We had a $10,000 increase in our county sales tax, I added that in. We also had some increases in the wholesale beer tax, I added in there. We had wholesale liquor tax increase of $2,000. I had a fees-for-driving-school increase of $1,000. I took off, I deducted $5,000 from state street aid, which gave us a net of plus $18,000. On the expenditure side, I deducted $36,203 from the medical dental insurance. I also added $90,000 into the state street aid paving budget. I also did the...moved the road loan and the interest out of the unassigned into the state street aid budget. Those are the differences from the previous proposal.
Seems like I best remember we were about $200,000 apart for the last time. Out of that 200, the changes you've made, where does that get us to that 200 number?
It pushes it farther away.
Okay. I have a question. How do we all of a sudden have an increase? You said increase in those taxes?
The county sales tax, just based on receipts of people shopping...
For one month, or for the year?
For the year. I did have a $10,000 increase over what I used from our projections originally, was last year, and then when they came in, I replaced it with what came in.
Okay. So that's actuals for the year?
Yes.
And everything that was an increase in the tax is the same scenario?
Yes. Commissioner Johnson, that pushes the number out right at $36,000. So, around $236,000.
So how did it go that way instead of the other way?
Probably because I hit the wrong button.
I hope so. You cut $36,000 out of their insurance, so that's $36,000 out of the budget, right?
Right, but I added $90,000 into this paving. But that's not in unassigned, that's in state street aid. So I guess in unassigned, it's a lot smaller.
Do you have any proposals, Commissioner Crutcher, for amendments?
Well, I've, you know, I've made the proposal last time, that we get to the 4.2 and the $3.5 million, increase the property tax rate to a dollar, effective rate to a dollar, with 15 cents of that being earmarked to specific funds.
In the proposal, he gave us a proposal at 4.2, correct? That's just not the one we passed.
Right, but I have some concerns about some of these, how we've ended up with $200,000 more in revenue now. I didn't go into that, because I was really pushing time, but I have some other questions about how we've ended up with an additional $200,000 in revenue to get us closer to that number. I don't...
I think we've got time.
Well, we do, but I was going to give you guys some time to...
No, I would like to know the answer to that.
For instance, Tom, if you have the, and I'm looking at the revenue tab, I guess, in the budget proposal.
Yes.
Okay, and specifically, and there's multiple line items where there's been changes. And really, there's been only changes on the revenue side, with the exception of Mr. Johnson stating that there had been a change with the employee insurance plan on the expenditure side, there really were no other changes on the expenditure side. Is that fair?
But, yes.
Okay. So the changes that we have in the budget are changes to reflect additional revenue that was not part of your proposed budget last week?
Correct.
Okay. So in a week's time, we have found roughly, if my math's correct, roughly $200,000 in additional revenue?
No.
Is that not right?
No, well, for this, well, yeah, yeah, for the whole year, yes.
Yeah, for the whole year, roughly $200,000. So let's start with...
No, 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 no. I mean, you're...no, you're looking at $10,000, $20,000, $23,000.
Well, no, in unassigned revenue, I'm showing there's a variance between...I'm showing there's a variance of around $162,000 in what you proposed last time versus now.
There are some things that got moved around, they're trying to make things simpler and give each fund its own budget. Well, there may be some things that were in unassigned that are now either in the school facility, to the tree bank, or the park fund. But the total changes I made on the plus side were $23,000 for the annual.
So if it was $23,000 on the plus side, then we would still be around that $200,000 number to get to the number that, well, it's really not my number, it's the number that this board sent to you guys. Okay, well, then I don't really, then we're still at around $200,000, based on what you just said. I don't even know that I need to go through this line item by line item and address my concerns or issues with the increase in revenue. It sounds like we're still $200,000 apart. And although that may not sound significant, it is when you're negative $500,000 in the unassigned fund, in my opinion.
I was told over a week ago that we had already cut out 100 of that 200, and then that's not what we got in the email. So, it's not what I was told it was going to be. So, how we got to that, I'm not sure.
But to answer the question that you presented a while ago, yes, there was an alternate proposal, and, you know, it didn't pass 3-2. So...
Well, and you're not, you're overlooking, there was a vote 4 to 1 that we all set in a meeting, and it was passed, and then when that came back, it wasn't what we passed. Then you had additional, and you made changes, right, Commissioner Crutcher? And that was denied.
I mean, I...
Mr. Hall?
I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to, is there a motion to approve the budget as presented? I mean, I'll amend the motion to send this back, that the numbers come back at 3.5 on the employee-related side of things. I think that'll get us to the 4.2 million on... I mean, I'll amend the motion to send this back, that the numbers come back at 3.5 on the employee-related side of things. I think that'll get us to the 4.2 million for a total. And then I guess we can deal with the property tax in the next agenda item. We need to deal with that now.
No, sir, you'll have to pass the budget first.
Okay.
You pass on first reading, we need to pass the budget. But if the budget is sent back, then the tax rate will need to be deferred.
Can we not make the amendment and still be moving forward? I mean...
They can if they want to, but if it's sent back, if it's not approved, it's something, then you're not going to be able to consider the tax rate because you don't have a budget on first reading.
But if they give us a definite definitive number, and this is what you're going to have, then they can also go ahead and vote for it.
They could have first reading them based on that, yes. But if they send it back for you to come back with a number that's not a determined number, then you're going to have to delay the tax rate.
So we can vote on 3.5 and 4.2?
If you get to 3.5, you will have the 4.2.
That's what I was thinking. And really, I don't care about the newfound revenue. I don't care about the revenue side of it at all. I'm talking just on the expenditure side of the unassigned. Those are the numbers that I'm proposing that we get to. You know, I hope you find some additional revenue. That's great, but...
Okay.
Well, I was told that it was going to be...
So we have amended a motion. We have amended motion. We had a first and second. We're still in discussion. Yes.
Okay. I've got some comments, and then I've got some discussion. I'll try to be brief. On the employee-related expenses, one of the questions that I have and still have, and I think Commissioner Crutcher and I discussed this at the last meeting, there is a $200,000 charge, item 510, that is not employee-related. It's our payment to TML. If you take that $200,000 out and put it into operating expenses where it belongs, then the total employee-related expenditures are below 3.5 and equal only 70%, which I believe Mr. Cross said was the general accepted amount. So I don't know whether there's a requirement in the accounting that you have to do, Tom, that 510 has to stay up there like that. But if you simply took that out, because that is not an employee-related expense, and move that to operating expenses, then the assertion that we're at 80-something percent and that the employee expense is over 3.5, go right out the window. That's my first question. My second question is, when you were calculating the salaries for next year, you have an increase of approximately $35,000 in salaries between what you expect to spend and what you are proposing for next year. Is that correct?
I'm showing for projected for this year, $2,353,923. What we propose for the budget is $2,389,041. Is that the same numbers you're looking at?
Yes. So that would be an increase of $36,000.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I would submit to you that along the lines of what Commissioner Crutcher said, that the number for fiscal year '15, '16 should be $2,353,923. That there should be no increase whatsoever if we're under a hiring freeze. I believe we're under a hiring freeze, and so there should be no additional monies, and that's 36,000 further that drives the employee costs down, which would be another percent. We would be down to 69,000. So I would suggest that we consider doing that. And when you do that, there will be a little residual effect to all the taxes, retirement, and all that other stuff. So you actually get about $40,000 when you take off $36,000. So that brings us down to, obviously by moving the $200,000 down, you have increased from 7/11 to 9/11, which is 9/11 and then 3.46 is equal to... What do we come up with, guys? Somebody with a calculator.
Where are you again? Just saying.
Oops. It always helps turn it on, doesn't it? We come up to 4381. Right? Is that what we come up to? So we're $181,000 off your mark. Right?
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
Okay. The only thing about doing that is, is we've simply moved a number from the employee-related side down to the operating side, and now we're still not at our 4.2 million.
Right, no, we're still $181,000 too high.
Right.
Okay? Are we together on that?
I agree.
Okay. All right. So what we're looking for is $181,000. Okay. Now, what we passed, I know you weren't here, Commissioner Crutcher, but the previous board passed a stabilization plan that was to offset $360,000 a year for a total of three years to repay and to provide surplus monies. Okay? We have a deficit of $400,000 in the school tax fund that we need to repay. We all agree on that, right? Okay? The other funds are solid. I mean, there's money to cover those. What we don't have is we don't have any float money, which is the rest of the stabilization plan. So 360 times 3 is $1,008,000. Minus $400,000 means that if we continue to have surplus budgets each year, we will have $700,000 approximately in stabilization fund, which is equal to approximately two months' worth of expenses. That's how we came to those numbers when we did that. Now, I understand there's been a lot of information distributed that was roughly right, but wasn't exactly accurate in making numbers decisions. And I won't go through all of that again. But what we are striving to do is we're striving to move up that schedule from a three-year schedule to a two-year schedule. And one of the things that I heard our consultant tell us was it took us a long time to get here. And it was not, in my opinion, wasteful spending. It was spending of reserve to provide services when we should have been making hard decisions to raise taxes all along. We haven't had a tax increase in the city of Fairview since 2004. Where else have you bought anything that hasn't gone up exponentially since 2004? I don't know of any place that it has. What we didn't do that we should have done, and I apologize for it, is we should have been raising your taxes all along. So that when we raised them 2 cents this year, you'd say, "That's no big deal." Instead, we've got to set it right. And whether we set it right at the 26 cent mark, which is what I have always proposed, 6 cents that we gave you back in a rebate four years ago, plus the inflation, or we go ahead and do what Commissioner Crutcher says, and go up to a dollar so that we build the fund back faster, either way, it's not as ominous as you think. Because all this time, you've been getting the benefit of the things that this money went toward. And so you have to kind of think the perspective on that. So my point is really very simple. If we want to pass this 4.2 earmark and say, "That's it. It's got to be 4.2," I think we're already there pretty much in the employee side. I think we're looking at taking a $180,000 cut on the expense side, on the operating expenditure side. And I've heard several of my colleagues indicate that they think we're at the bottom. I don't know. But I do know that if we pass the budget that's before us, we're going to create a surplus in excess of the $360,000 we need to fund the plan that is on the books. And that the state's not coming. The MTA's folks said, "You can't do it overnight. You've got to do it in a plan. It's important to have a plan and to stick to the plan." So, I mean, we can go through line by line and reduce other things, but I think what we started out to do when we passed the stabilization plan, we are exceeding. And that's not talking about any growth in revenue at all. And we all know that while I agree with the mayor's idea that we don't include it in the budget process, we will have some growth. For the 20 years I went back, Fairview has never had no growth. Never. Sometimes it was as low as 2 percent. Sometimes it was as high as 8 percent. But it was never no growth. So how are we going to pay for the $400,000 difference? Because that's what it is. It isn't a half a million dollars. It's $400,000 difference because we can use the facilities fund plus the $36,000. How are we going to pay that in the future years? We're going to pay it through some growth, some continual looking for stuff. So I don't... There may be some tweaking, like I mentioned here, something I saw on the salaries. But I think this budget is a good budget. And with the tweaking, I think that it takes us where we want to go.
One second. Can we... I know we have the new rule where we need to take a recess, but since we have something on the table, I didn't know that it would necessarily be appropriate to stop in the midst of, we already have amendments.
That wasn't an ironclad rule. It says if you're... It would be around that time.
Okay. Just wanted to check.
You can go ahead and finish.
Don't want to mess with anybody's restroom, sorry.
It's okay. Thank you, Mayor. I have some questions for Tom, based off of the comments from Commissioner Bussell. Why is the $200,000 in the employee side? Is it required to be there? The $200,000 line item, 510?
It is... It's... What's not in there, which probably might be the most expensive part of it, is the workers' comp. It's all... And it probably needs to be split out between property. Of course, your property's your most least expensive, and then your liability next, and your workers' comp's the most expensive.
Historically, has that number been in that side of things? Has it been on the employer-related side historically?
This is the first time this has ever happened. It's never come to this board in my... In my... That I know of in this format.
Okay. Can you explain the increase in income and salaries?
Yes. If you see over here on the backside, we had a negative. We predicted coming in minus $52,396. We got a full-time fire chief now. And that's pretty much the difference.
So that salary number under this budget's a firm number, then? It's going to have to stay increased?
It's pretty close.
Okay. All right, so then I'll go to my comments.
Could I add something to that, though?
Sure.
There is no attrition factor.
Well, okay.
If you assume that we continue our attrition of one to two people a year under a hiring freeze, you would have to take off a percent of that. So say 1 percent. Well, 1 percent offsets what your increase is.
I understand what you're saying, but I really don't want to assume anything. I know that you do a lot of assuming in a budget, making projections, but I really don't want to assume there's going to be any attrition. I don't want to factor that in. If that happens, then so be it. But I certainly don't want to take that into consideration in my... It doesn't really change my position on this, the attrition. It may very well happen, but I don't want to take that into consideration. Now, with respect to the stabilization plan, as I understood the plan, it was a three-year plan. And I think Commissioner Bussell has asserted that now we are trying to make it a two-year plan. No. I think what's going to happen under the proposed budget is now it's going to become a four- or longer-year plan because the first year, almost the entire surplus is going to be used to pay back the school facilities tax. So now we've not even put anything into that $360,000 account the first year, really. So it's now become a longer plan. I'm not interested in a longer plan. I'm interested in getting this done as quickly as we can get it done. It may not happen in one year, but I'm certainly not willing to extend the three-year plan. If that was the plan that was put in place... You know, we have shown the propensity to make policy and then not do what the policy says do. And I want to do what the policy says do. You know, unless there is a good reason to change from that. And these changing numbers and moving numbers around in the budget, it really doesn't matter whether that $200,000 in the employer-related side or in the operating side, it still doesn't get us to 4.2. I've already said, I don't think, based on the numbers in this budget, that we can cut anymore on the operating side. So it may change that number that we proposed in the employer-related side. I don't like that I'm the one up here saying that something's got to be done in the employer-related side of things. That has not made me a popular person, I can assure you. But somebody's got to say it. We, you know, and that's... You know, that's why I take the position that I do on the budget.
If I could offer just one point of clarification. Stabilization plan as passed outlines the steps that will be taken. The first $360,000 will go into the city's operating account to provide that float money that's needed. The second year, the 25 percent and any other surplus up to 25 percent will be in fiscal year 2016, applied to repay the school facilities tax, with 2017 getting another 25 percent of the school facilities tax. And then in the final year, the school facilities tax will be brought whole in 2018. So the... And any surplus above that will go into the stabilization fund. So the stabilization fund does outline how it will happen. So we would have to make a change to that in order to pay the school facilities tax back all in one year. Otherwise, the first year, with the $500,000 surplus, the first 360 would go to the stabilization fund. The next $170,000 would go to the school facilities tax.
And that's not counting any...
Growth.
2 percent to 8 percent.
That's correct.
Which 8 percent, if we got 8 percent, it's another $330-something thousand.
I'm not counting on us getting a nickel. That's where I'm at with it. And Commissioner Bussell respectfully has continued to say, "Negative 430." I don't know where that's coming from. The CFO has said he thinks that the number's going to be closer to 550 in the unassigned. That was the number that you gave me earlier.
531.
531. So, again, I don't know where the... Those numbers, why they're not reconciled.
One of the things that I keep going back to, I mean, I understand what everybody's... Their points. I mean, I think we'll have increase in sales tax. I think there'll be some positive growth this coming years. In the next one to five years, we're going to see a lot of changes. But a lot of this has come from us continuing to project these changes. And this last year, we didn't include, like, Taco Bell and some of the other businesses. that came to our community, and thank goodness we didn't, because look where we would have been. So, the first thing we need to realize is, um, we can't sit here and talk about ifs and buts. Um, one of the things that we need to do is look at actual numbers and base our budget on our reality. And our reality is that we're gonna end this year with a negative, and we've touched a school facility tax to float the whole year. If you look, we ran, and you can answer this, Mr. Darty, for me, how many months would you say we ran on paper in the negative?
I didn't keep up with it as good as I did the year before, but I'm, I would, I would say we might have been in the negative every month.
Yeah.
If, if it was over, it was, if we were in the black, it was very small. I know the year before, um, I think we were in the black, like $9,000 one month.
Okay. So, with that being said, we can go get a tan, as talked about earlier, and we can get the tax revenue, and we could try to float ourself, but if this budget, the way it stands, does not match, how are we gonna pay back the tan? And the problem that I have is that you really, have you ever heard, "You can't borrow your way out of debt?" Um, you can't borrow your way out of debt. So, my biggest fear is if we don't make the appropriate cuts, then we're gonna be, at the end of the year, owing another note on top of the, um, the debt restructure that we already have. So, the time to suffer is now. If we do what we need to do to make the appropriate cuts, we do have the stabilization plan in place. We do have some safeguards. I believe 100% we did not get here overnight, and it's not gonna be fixed overnight. Now, I think there's ways to fix it quicker, and if we are gonna sit here and hope that in some way, that it's gonna magically be fixed by a tan, we're wrong. You gotta look at the numbers, and those numbers speak. Now, Tom, you got us closer than we've been since I've been here on projections. And to that, I mean, you deserve to be applauded. I mean, I haven't seen a budget in four and a half years that came this close. So, I will give you this, and we know that this was not y'all's burden, but it's up to us to fix it. So, I just kinda want us to really stop and think before we go into this. In a year, we're gonna have a loan payment for a debt restructure of our debt. And then we're gonna have a tan with interest. No interest, he says no.
The tan has to be paid off.
I know, I know, but that's what I'm saying. Here's the thing, is you're borrowing against your own taxes.
Yeah.
And you gotta pay 'em back, so...
There, we, there's no way, there's no scenario that would play out that we wouldn't have the money to pay that back, because we would seize the property if they did not pay us. We would sell the property to pay the debt. There's no possibility that the tan's not paid. Now, the other things, there's possibilities.
Okay, so how much interest are we paying on the tan? They're not, they're gonna give us an interest-free loan?
No, I didn't, I didn't say that. I'm just saying that we won't have a, a tan payment. If, if we do either one of these scenarios, we will not have a tan the following year.
Okay. So, let's say that's the case. We won't have a tan to worry about. We'll seize people's properties, whatever. We'll go on from this point. We don't have a tan. We're still gonna owe the debt restructure. So, and with that being said, we may have 360,000 in the bank, we'll still have a negative school facility tax, and now, next year, are we gonna raise taxes again, or what are we gonna do? Because now we have the debt that we have to pay off. Is the debt never winning, we just got the break. Now, we have the break that we're gonna now have to make payments. So, that is my concern. Without finding cuts this year, where we think we're gonna make ourselves so much better the next year, we're still gonna have the same problem. And then we're gonna have to decide how much to raise the people's property tax. I don't think that they're gonna buy next year after we raised it to a dollar, or, you know, variance on whatever way we go. Yes?
I have one quick, quick question for Tom. Thank you, Mayor. Were we overdrawn at the bank at any point during this year?
No, sir.
Never overdrawn?
No, sir.
Would you like to answer? Yes.
A question on how we'll be paying the note.
Can you speak up? I'm sorry, I'm helping Joe here.
On the note for the restructuring of the debt, the adequate facilities tax goes toward paying that note, and y'all have actually just recently increased that another quarter. So, the biggest part of that, those funds will go toward paying the, the note.
And I would like to say, we actually were at a negative balance once this year off of these statements. It wasn't long, it was a couple days.
Well, it wasn't overdrawn, but it was, it was, um, we had discussed with John Blade during one of our extremely, um, and he, he said that it was, it was fine.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. You weren't overdrawn. It was negative.
My question, well, I mean, I guess we can debate on what overdrawn means. Were, were we in the negative? Have we spent every nickel that we had in that account at one point this year?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question. Maybe I didn't state it properly.
Do you think, Mr. Darty, that you ever, with all the funds being, with that being said, with all the funds being in the same account, that we had to dip into state street aid during the year? I know Mr. Kraus said that this is okay as long as you balance. It wasn't a good practice, but is that a true statement, or were those funds in a different place?
This is a true statement.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, he, our MTS representative, and I've heard this before from, well, maybe it was from prior, I don't know, but that it didn't matter as much, as long as they cared if it was paid off. But I don't know if that's the practice, and I don't know if that's what the comptroller would agree to, but I don't think that, they don't pay attention until you, budget turns in in your audit. So, I don't know that it, they're not going through bank statements. They care about the bottom line and did you get where you need to be. So, um, with that, I'm just stating that for everybody else that's here, um, that Mr., is it Krau, Krauch?
It's Krauch.
I keep wanting to say it wrong. Um, he did say that, um, with the funds being together, um, it could be due. But how many, so with that being said, that's my main concern, is, I don't know. I just, it just doesn't add up to me. Why would we keep doing this to ourself? Makes no sense.
Just a quick question. So, your alternative to what the budget is on the table for tonight would be to what? To reduce it? Mayor.
Oh, me? Well, I mean, I actually didn't bring a new one. I have, um, two that I presented, and there was one that actually, when I sat down, it was a third option, but I didn't present it the first night. That, the last plan was to go back to what the salaries were, um, 2014, that when Donna and I kinda, she puts some, she's the mastermind of the numbers, putting them in, um, it was an option, but it's not that much different than what y'all have on the table, and that is just however they do it, get the salaries to that dollar amount. So, we can leave it up to Mr. Hall, but I think moving money around is not the way to do it.
I agree with that. If we're, if we're $180,000 difference right now, maybe we need to find 90 from each side.
Well, I don't really think, I mean, I, it's a good option, but I really think that operating, I worry if they could take anymore and do their jobs. Just considering in the last couple years, it was a higher amount.
And I want my motion to be clear. What I'm proposing is, is that we get to the 3.5 and 4.2 based on the numbers as they're presented in this budget, not by moving line items from one place to the other.
And you know, and I think that's gonna be a painful budget. I'm not gonna lie, I think it's gonna be hard for these, um, employees to work within, but I think we have an obligation, um, to the citizens. We're raising the taxes a big jump. Maybe Commissioner Bussell was right. If we would've done a little bit of this as we went along, um, it wouldn't have to hurt so bad. But reality is, gotta fix it. Any more discussion or thoughts?
Yeah, I just, the 4.2 that we're looking at, if we have to make a cut somewhere in employees, I will not vote for it to come from safety and security of the citizens, period. I mean, either one of those two departments, fire or the police department, uh, because that's something that, that they deserve, they pay for, and we just can't, to me, I can't cut that, period. Uh, if there's a cut that we can make, that Mr. Hall can make somewhere else to roll that figure down, I, as bad as I'd hate to, I can agree with that, but not in either one of those two departments.
And, you know, there's a simple solution. I've said it many ways. I know it would be painful, but even if we take the lowest cuts, even going back to, you know, the 2014, most people wouldn't even see a 2% decrease. And I know, I mean, honestly, I know losing salary. You know, we, my husband had overtime. We counted him. Boom, one day, his position was moved, and we lost, you know, a huge chunk. That hurt. $1,200 hurts for a family that does, you know, it needs to live in a certain amount. So, I'm just saying, it's not, it's, it's not fun, but no one wants to lose their job. And I really think, if you ask enough employees, how many employees? You don't, I'm not asking names, but you did ask employees, would you be willing to take cut? What was your percentage, Mr. Hall, that was willing to take a, um, decrease?
I asked several, especially on the raise before it was ever brought up, who all was willing to not take a 2% raise. I'd say I had a 95% approval there.
Okay, so not taking a 2% raise?
Yes.
Did you ask them cuts?
Well, that, that come up later, so I haven't, I haven't been to that route just yet.
Well...
This was before the, the very beginning of the budget cuts, and so I actually went to Tom about reducing my salary, before this, any of this ever come up. You know, so, uh, it was in the thought process.
Yes.
I just want to help a whole lot, but I, I don't have a cell phone or a, or health insurance, but I'll certainly forego my salary for the next fiscal year, short, less the seven, or less the salary I just donated earlier for July.
You're gonna give it away twice now.
I don't wanna, yeah, but I mean, it doesn't help a lot, but I'm, I'm willing to, till we get ourselves out of this, I'm willing to play, uh, I'm willing to participate in the cuts.
Well, back to mine, it did have us cutting. Now, we didn't take the salary away, but it, we had a, we were at 7% while everybody else was at 2. I mean, you could do half, you could do all, whatever, you know? I kinda personally, I, you, obviously, we don't live off of the whopping $400 the citizens pay me a month to do my 40 hours a week, but, um, in addition to my 40-hour-a-week job, but in some ways, it's just, the thing about it is, we, um, I think we should all cut, but, you know, I think, I don't know, maybe it's, I think I fought against it for four years, and I think I probably, you know, I've worked my tail off for you, but okay, I'll cut too. Now, cut the salaries. Cut the salaries. I'll take mine away, y'all have the 400 a month. Do something to fix the problem. What do you got now?
Got two more jump of roses.
Well, Wayne threw in five. There we go. We got $5,800. This is how we play.
I, I think, I think, uh, if you give us a number that, 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 um, everybody can agree on, um, Mr. Hall can, can make the, make the decision and, uh, and roll with it, we, we just really felt like that it would be, especially with everything going on in the city, and I don't want to go in the whole analog of, of last meeting, but, uh, it's, if that is the board's choice, that is, we're here, we're here to serve. Uh, and we're here to do what's in the best interest of this city, the best for our ability. And, um, but I think it's, um, I think, I think for every, most everybody that's employed here is, is here for the city, and, uh, and, and, you know, nobody wants to take a cut, and nobody wants to be let go, but, uh, you know, it's, if that's the way the board feels where we are, you know, that's, that's what we gotta do.
Well, and here's the sad thing is, I mean, we did give a number. I think this has been so, um, you know, it's just hard because it's so emotional, because you do let these people, and that's why I tried to give another option of, let's all, you know, share the burden, because you know safety's important, you know we're growing, you know there's potential. So, um, that's why my approach was not because I want to burden everybody's household with a decrease, but it's, it wouldn't hurt as bad if we all took that. And that's what, it seemed like everybody wanted, and no one wanted to cut. No department heads, they all said, "I can't live without, you know, these people, and this is public safety, and this is what we have to have." Share the burden. It's not their fault, it's not my fault, but I love the city. I want it to survive. The health of the city is the most important thing to me. What it looks like for my kids matters to me.
I want to clarify one more thing with my motion, and I hate that I have to keep clarifying it, but when I, when I say 4.2 and 3.5, really, I don't even, the 4.2, 3.5, when I say those numbers, I mean 4.2 and 3.5. I mean 4.286. I mean 4.2 and 3.5, uh, because we have to get to a number, and, 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 you know, I've explained last meeting why that, why those numbers are what they are, so I'm not gonna go back to that again, but to just, just to briefly say something, or to comment on something that Vice Mayor Sutton said, it's Wayne's decision.
I agree.
I don't, I'm not advocating, you know, I've been asked to make suggestions in the past, and I'll never fall for that again, but it's, it's Wayne's decision where those cuts come from, and, and, you know, I'm gonna defer to him on that. That's all the discussion I have. I'm, I'm ready, whenever you guys are, I'm ready to vote. I'm, I'm ready, whenever you guys are, I'm ready to vote.
So salary.
I think we need some clarity on what we're voting on.
Okay. Well, I think there's two motions on the floor. There's, Brandy, you can.
The, the original motion is on the floor to approve the budget as presented and then
But can you clarify, you're saying the salary, I mean, you want the salary side to be?
4.2 overall, 3.5 on the employee rated expenditure side with the numbers in the budget as they exist now, not by moving a number from one side to the other. That's the amended motion.
Clarification on my part is that regarding layoffs or in salary cuts.
I know, y'all decide. That's y'all. Mm-hmm. I mean, we already voted on a motion, motion 4 to 1 deciding what to do, and it didn't come back like that. So, I mean, if you want to amend it, and, I mean, there's, now it's on you. If you want to deduct salaries or if you want to let positions go, that's your gain. But I guarantee you, if you choose to go to the route where you ask people, those people that take the deduction, you need to write that down and remember, because when it comes down to it, those people did what it took to take, get the job done, and they loved their city and they loved working for their city. Now, it doesn't mean, I'm not saying, there's some people that just can't afford and that's their, that's prerogative, you know, that's, that's life, and I understand that. But I'm just saying, I think if either route you want to go, I think that if these employees hang on, they'll see the light in the end of the tunnel and we can make it up to them. Or you can just, you let people go. Whatever you want to do.
It would, it would be my recommendation that if, if, if y'all would approve some, some motion today so we can move forward. We've got a lot of things pending on, on this budget and, and I, I think, I think a united moving forward is, is good. I think, I just, I just think we need, need to move forward tonight. I don't think we need to hold up on it for any reason.
Clear.
He already said we can do that based on Shannon's numbers.
Yeah, the only thing that, I have two things really. Any mo, any ordinance is amendable through, up to second reading, so he can go back and amend his numbers. Second thing is, I would not recommend that he keep a list of people because that, that could get you into a real nasty lawsuit that says, okay, this guy got promoted, I'm as good as he is, but he agreed to do this, and, and I think you'd meet that somewhere down the road.
That's probably a fair statement.
Just a point of clarification, what I'm proposing is not to touch the revenue side, so it would still be the 90 cents on the revenue side. That's not what I, that was not part of my motion. I, I've just specifically directed it to the expense side.
Okay, so we're clear? No, there's discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need to vote on the motion first.
Oh, amended, that was amended motion. Okay. So, and the amended motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Then you don't need to vote on the other motion because that took its place.
Let's take a break.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was about to do. Okay, we all take a, about a four-minute recess.
Okay. We are going to go to 10A. And do you have that where you can read?
10A is an ordinance to annex certain property located on Horn Tavern Road, amount 02222. Parcels 064.00 and 065.00. Here in the described below and incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee belonging to Priscilla Lampley. All the property, both for annexation, live within the City of Fairview, Tennessee's growth boundary.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? I just apologize for not doing you first before C and whatever other member we did. But I do appreciate you hanging in there with us. Okay, this is for just the rezoning.
Annexation.
Yeah. Okay, are you going to stay if you're staying, you're supposed to stay?
No, that's if you refuse yourself, excuse me.
Okay. The annexation, okay, let's go. Any other discussions?
Quick question, coming home.
We're looking at RS 15 zoning, 33 homes. Thirty-three homes at RS 15. Which will be the next hearing?
Okay. And it's a second of a second phase of a habitat?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries?
Thank you.
Okay, that will put us back down to... We'll go J.
Pass your budget and then you want to do your tax rate.
That was our.
That was our.
So we need to go J, is what I'm asking. If we get any order.
Yeah, that's J. And if I could, Mayor, while we're here, we've got the J and K are both setting public appearance for proposed budget and the annual tax rate. There was a typo in those two resolutions, which we have corrected. We would ask, the typo was that it was setting it for July 18th, and it should be June 18th. We have corrected those, and we've got the resolutions here now. So we would, it won't affect the caption, but we just want to make sure that you understand that they want it for the 18th, so we get it passed before you get into the first of July.
Okay, so do we have a first and second? To set a public hearing?
Second.
You need to read the caption.
Okay. You got it, you want me to do it? Well, I mean, I have the line.
I've got it right here. Discuss and/or take action on resolution number 20-15, a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the proposed budget for the City of Fairview, Tennessee for fiscal year 2016. Move to approve.
Okay, first and second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, that'll bring us to K.
Discuss and take action on section nine of bill number 2015-26, ordinance number 891, an ordinance to the City of Fairview, Tennessee adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year of 2014. Move to approve.
Second. But I think we need to probably move what the tax rate's going to move to approve a specific tax rate, is that right?
It's in the ordinance.
Oh, it's already in there, then moved, then second.
Section seven or something.
They can't change that level?
Yes, but it's section nine in the ordinance.
Okay.
All in line with your proposal?
My proposal was to go to a dollar with 15 cents earmarked. I mean, I'm not opposed to still doing that. That wasn't part of the motion that was, or that wasn't part of what was discussed earlier. Man, I don't... I mean, that was part of my original proposal, so I'll stand by what my original proposal was. I'll move that that be amended to a dollar with 15 cents of that earmarked as follows. Five cents to the park fund. And when I say the park fund, I mean the park system, not the system, not just Buick Park Fund. I'm sorry? Park Fund.
Like Parks Department?
Parks Department, there you go, to the Parks Department. Five cents to... I completely lost what I'd said before.
You said public safety.
No, it was, it was five... Help me.
It was debt.
Five cents to, that's right, five cents to the street aid to help with paving projects, and five cents to debt.
Now, want to change that street aid?
That's fine, as stated by Tom. Five cents to the highways and streets department, and five cents to debt restructure, or to the debt payment.
Okay, with that being said, so these are not, they're going to be included in this budget, but those 5% have to fund, it's not a saving put away, it's funding those...
Funding projects in those specific areas. And it's funding part of the payment, the debt service payment for the, you know, that we'll have, we won't have one this coming year, so we'll tuck that away, and it'll be part of the debt service payment for the following year.
Do you all like me to set up separate accounts?
I would.
Drive with them and be positive until after property next season.
As long as it's there June 30th of next year, then...
Right.
How does this affect what was previously passed?
It would just change the, it would just change the revenue. It would increase the revenue in the proposed budget. But according to Larry, we couldn't, we couldn't really vote on the tax rate at that point. We needed to wait until we had passed a budget, so I really didn't know how to address that. That's why I didn't address it.
Well, if you, if you're sticking with what you had in your budget amendment, the 4.1 and the whatever, if you're sticking with that, then this is used to finance this. What I was saying was, if you didn't have some number, you had your first reading of your budget, if you hadn't had your first reading of your budget, you couldn't have the first reading of the tax rate. Since you've had the first reading of the budget, those numbers can be changed and amended for the second reading. So what the tax rate is to the budget is, you don't have to have one, have the other, you've got to have the tax, you've got to have the budget passed before you pass tax rate. So all we'd have to do is amend the ordinance for the tax rate before the public, the second reading and the public hearing.
That's, that's not getting to my question. Question is, you're going to put five, five cents into the parks and five cents into the streets.
That's right.
But you've already capped the amount of money that they can spend. So what are you going to do with that money?
That money's going to be put into a designated fund or a commit...
Or like a capital fund or...
Whatever you want to call it, I think that's one of the terms that I'd used in the past, is it would be a capital, I think the debt service is what I refer to as a capital project fund.
I understand the debt. That makes perfect sense to me. What doesn't translate to me is that if Tom places that revenue, takes that revenue in, then what, what are you going, I mean, the 5% then goes into the parks budget, and the 5% goes into the street budget? Okay, but you've already capped what they could spend. So why are we putting it there? If we're not going to raise the expense side to compensate for the extra 10 cents you just put in there?
Well, what I have in mind for that money to be used for is projects, doing stuff. So I don't, if we need to, if we need...
Then I would amend your motion to say that that 10 cents is put into capital improvement funds, not put into their line budget.
Second, I withdraw my original motion.
Otherwise, to me, you're, you're just going to create, you know, you've invalidated what was just passed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really care how we've designated or put it, I just want it to be there for capital projects or things that we need to do, whether it's expanding the park system, whether it, because...
That way, you could use it wherever you need to use it.
Right.
Just put it into capital improvement projects.
Then you wouldn't have to back on a major budget either.
Fifteen cents of the tax would go to capital.
No, 10 would go to that, 5 would go to debt.
Okay. So he said 5, 5, and 5.
Yeah, but that was amended, that was amended. The 5 cents will still go to the debt, the 10 cents will go into a fund called Capital Projects, and we'll leave it at that.
So the 5 cents is additional going towards the debt. You're like going towards the...
Sure. That's what I want to see happen.
Yeah, that sounds like a great...
That's the whole point, that's the whole point. You want to restate the motion?
Yeah, my amendment to your motion is that the additional, that the tax rate, you've already made the motion, tax rate be a dollar, with 5 to debt, 5 to streets, 5 to parks. My amendment is to change the 5 to streets and 5 to parks to be into a capital improvement fund, rather than to be allocated to those departments.
And can you add what Tom, do you have a problem adding what Tom said?
And the debt fund actually be a sinking fund to be not used for current debt payments, but to be used to be able to retire the debt early.
I second that motion and withdraw my original motion.
Okay. Then we have a motion on the floor, and any other discussion?
I would just like to clarify that I think this is a much-needed thing, and I'm glad to see people coming together on this to make this happen. I am going to abstain from this vote as well as I did back in 2004, when we raised it 10 cents for public safety, but I'm not going to vote against it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. That would give us M. In our crazy alphabet. Discuss and take action on employee health plan for 2015-2016 budget year. Mr. Bissell. Commissioner Bissell.
I defer to Tom.
Okay.
My recommendation on this is that you've already taken care of that action when you, when you approved, when you approved the budget, so I would probably just take this off the table.
Okay. Well, can table M if everybody's in grants?
I don't, I don't think there's any reason for M in the going forward.
Okay. Okay.
I think, I think what this was, was a carryover of it being deferred, and then...
It was just going to be on here in case it needed to be handled.
Okay. Going back to the front of the alphabet. And yes, you just have to have humor about it.
Are we going to D?
Yep, we'll go back up to... I gotta find it. Okay, D. Okay, discuss and take action on resolution number 1615. Do you have that?
Resolution to set a public hearing for the proposed obtaining public comment on the annexation of certain property located on Horn Tavern Road here in described below and incorporate same within the corporate boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee. All the property proposed for annexation live within the City of Fairview, Tennessee growth boundary, the property to be annexed is located in Williamson County, Tennessee. City of Fairview, Tennessee growth boundary geological listing of assessment, roll map 022, parcel 064, debt 00, and 065.00 belonging to Priscilla Lampley. If she here or required, he'd be...
Won't have to be with this, it's just you sit in a public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, discuss and take action on bill 2015-24.
No, ordinance number 8, number 889, an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview, Tennessee's municipal zoning code, Article 5, Residential District Regulations, Section 5, 104, supplemental design provisions, 5-104 dot 1, development standards for multifamily dwellings, paragraph 4.
Pass it over.
This is, this is simply changing the requirement that we have in the present, which is for any size, presently we require a clubhouse for any size multifamily dwelling. This would be requiring a clubhouse only for developments containing 50 units or more.
Move to approve.
Got a first, got a second? Discussion? I just want to comment from the meeting, I think they found that the way it was in there before required, I mean, 50 homes is a really small development, but they were requiring a 2,000 square foot clubhouse, and so that was brought to their attention. So instead of making it a requirement for the 50 homes, they decided to, obviously somebody that wanted to build 50 could, but we wanted to not restrict the builders. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That would give us F. Discuss and take action on resolution 1815.
A resolution to set a public hearing for the proposed purpose of obtaining public comment on an ordinance bill number 20-2015-24, ordinance number 889, to amend the City of Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Zoning Code, Article 5, Residential District Regulations, Section 5-104, supplemental design provisions, 5-104, debt point 1, development standards for multifamily dwellings, paragraph 4, same thing, Frank.
Move to approve. Second.
First and second discussion? All in favor? Aye. G, discuss and take action on bill 2015-25.
Ordinance number 89, an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview, Tennessee's Municipal Zoning Code, Article 8, overlay district, section 8-203, administrative procedure, administrative procedure governing planned unit developments, 8-203 dot 1, primarily approval, preliminary, I'm sorry, getting late, the proposed planned unit development, 8-203 dot 3, number 4, preliminary approval of the proposed planned unit development, 8-203 dot 6, preliminary approval of the proposed planned unit development, 8-203 dot 3, preliminary approval of the proposed planned unit development.
Move to approve.
Have a first, do we have a second?
Second, for let Frank tell us what's going on. Discussion.
Discuss several things. First, presently we have a provision that says zoning administrator will deem whether a HUD application is complete. Let's take that to the city manager doing that. Secondly, the planning commission's action on preliminary application for planning development requires a decision to be made in 45 days. We're eliminating that requirement because some of these HUD developments take longer than 45 days for this process. And then, the next thing that's eliminated, there's presently, there's a requirement that upon preliminary development, planned review, the planning commission board is report on recognition of board commissioners, receiving that from the planning commission board will consider such a report. Any instance where the board commissioners may act, either approve a proposed development which the planning commission had recommended or disapproved, or additionally approved, the planning board should provide specific guidance as to overall design, any modifications required, any additional information they require by the planning commission regarding substantial compliance between the preliminary requirement. That says where they take, eliminating that requirement, I think the board could adequately take action on whatever's brought before them in the way of a HUD proposal, put every any kind of modifications or changes they want to make to it. I don't think it has to be specified for each particular thing. And the board, the committee agree with that.
The requirement for the days was 45 days, what did we change it to?
Seven days.
So now it's an ambiguous figure, and it could be three years.
No, it's...
By statute, you've got to act on it within, within 30 days after they submit their final plan. If I bring...
If they never get to their final plan, because the planning commission never allows them to present a final plan, how do you get to the 30 days?
Well, the state statute says, if they come in and they're required to submit a final plan, so your 30 days doesn't start to run until they submit that final plan.
If they never present a final because they never can get the preliminary passed, how, when does the 30 days start?
Well, then they appeal to this board. Because there's very few of those get done in 45 days. I mean, they've had, they file them and they withdraw them a couple of times, and they want to come back so the clock doesn't start ticking on the state statute until they actually submit the final plan. Now, if they don't get one through, they can appeal saying, "I can't get a final plan through." But once they file a final plan, whether it's with the planning commissioner with this board, you've got 30 days to act on it or approve itself. Believe it or not, that has happened in the state.
And so what's the reasoning that you feel, are you trying to make the process easier for people to come dispute a action from the planning commission?
Yeah, it was to make it so you don't have, you've got a state requirement, you've got a local requirement, and the state requirement will take care of all of that, because you're sitting here with 45 days and they hadn't submitted a final plan. Like I said, if the person says, "I can't get a final plan out of here," they can always appeal to this board. And then, but if they, if they come in and submit a plan and withdraw it, it wasn't a final plan, your state statute doesn't start ticking. So you're sitting here looking at 45 days, 30 days, which one, which one are you going to go by? Obviously, you go by the states.
So by removing that, then we just go by the state?
Right. We don't have any choice but to go by that one.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that gives us L, discuss and take action on Resolution 2115.
A resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the property tax rate for the city of Fairview, Tennessee for fiscal year 2016. Move to approve.
We've already, Mayor, we've already voted on that.
Oh, yeah?
I think we, I think, I don't think we voted on setting a public hearing for the ordinance we just talked about.
No, you didn't.
On H.
We need to do H.
Right.
H.
Okay.
But we probably need to do L, too. Yeah.
Since, since you've already, if you already read the...
He read the caption.
Okay, go ahead and consider that one, then go back to H, because there's no need to read it twice.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. H, discuss and take action on Resolution 1915.
A resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comments on an ordinance bill number 2015-25, ordinance number 892, amend the city of Fairview municipal zoning code, Article 8, overlay district, Section 8-203, administrative procedure governing planned unit developments, 8-203 dot 3, preliminary approval of the planned, proposed planned unit development, 8 point, 8-203 dot 3, preliminary approval of the proposed planned unit development of 8 point-203 dot 3, preliminary approval of proposed planned unit development, 8.203 dash 3, preliminary approval of the proposed planned unit development. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, you have a first and a second. I'll go back and see mine. Any discussion? And this is a case review thing also?
This is a safe public hearing?
Some of those resounding ordinances, so you have to have a public hearing.
Okay. Any discussion other than my question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that gives us T, unless anybody wants to correct it.
Discuss and or take action on Pitney Bowles' service agreement. Mr. Bissell.
Tom? Or Brandy, I'm sorry.
Uh, we've got a contract issue with our, with our, um, postage machine, and it's going to go up from $27 a month to $62 a month, and they've changed all the regulations that you can't even use what we've been using, and I told, uh, Brandy, I think we can, we can just pay postage and not worry about having a machine, so I, that's my recommendation. Um, I think what we're doing is we're paying, paying the rental for the machine plus postage, so, um, we've got enough, uh, places where we can get postage close enough by, I think we can do without the machine.
Move to approve.
Second.
First and second, any discussion?
Prove Tom's recommendation, I'm sorry. Move to approve Tom's, sir.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That would bring O, discuss and take action on the Open Meetings Act and Open Records. Crutcher.
If I were the city attorney.
Mayor, uh, boards of commissioners, I'm, I'm prepared to present that tonight if you would like, but I have a recommendation, considering the late hour, this is, this is important stuff, and I'm not trying to put it off, uh, as, like I said, if the board desires, I'll be happy to go through it tonight, but what I would suggest to the board is that we defer this and put it on the first meeting after the budget process is completed, because it, considering the late hour, and, I mean, like, I'm not downgrading the importance of this, I want to present it to you, and I'll be honored to present it to you, if you want to do it tonight, we will, but I think it would be more appropriate to, for the benefit of everyone here and the people who have stayed on with us, to put this at the first meeting after we finish the budget process.
So move to defer. Move defer to the first meeting in July?
Yeah, that would be the first meeting in July.
Okay, I got a first and a second, and I take it you think it's going to take a while?
No, ma'am, I think it'll take about 20 minutes.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, I want to have a, a chance at the end to have, entertain any questions you might have, um, but I think it'd be more appropriate at an earlier hour.
I appreciate it. Okay, first and second, no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, city managers, items to discuss, A, miscellaneous updates.
I believe I made my statement earlier, so, and basically that was to inform the citizens that the boards have protected them by keeping their water insurance rates down through the years, because if it were tripled, I believe our growth in our town would have been gone. I don't believe we would have too many developers been, coming here with a sure rate that high. That was my gist of it.
Okay, city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, having requested to, uh, present my portion at a later date, uh, I have nothing further to add tonight, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Bissell?
No, ma'am.
Um, Commissioner Crutcher?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, um, Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, vice mayor?
Just real briefly, if you don't mind, I was already asked about this earlier tonight. The reason I didn't vote on the salary part of it, our part of it, was 70% of mine's already dedicated to a charity within the city, and I'm not willing to give that up for them, so that was my reason behind not voting for that.
Okay, with that being said, at this late hour, I think I will say no more, and, um, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You're adjourned.